Like to call to order this meeting, our regular scheduled meeting of the Columbus Municipal School Board, October the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, we do have a forum present, uh, at this time, we also have trustee, um, Avon Cox calling in over here. Ms. Cox, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right. And so, uh, at this time, I'm gonna ask, uh, trustee Frederick Sparks if he would ask our invocation, all above the pledge.
Good morning, Father. Heavenly Father, we come down once more to be in Lord God's name, to say thank you for the day. And although we accept you to be with us, we're going to this meeting, we pray that all things be found with your side. We ask also, Father, that you would just continue to watch over this district as a whole and all that are working within the mission. We ask also a special blessing upon the student body, continue to be with us all, let us go through this COVID nineteen, uh, uh, pending, you know, God. We ask now that you just continue to just be God, to God all I am self. We got to see, in the name of this, it's against on Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please, your asked.
Attention, the holy flag. Flag of the United States of America, and the true republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice thrive.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here today. Uh, board, we do have, uh, our agenda, uh, before us. Uh, and if I could, I need a motion to adopt today's agenda. Has been motioned by, uh, Mr. Sparks. Do I have a second? Has been seconded by Dr. Schumate. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, um, all invariably signify to the right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Now we'll go to, uh, item four, which is school board minutes and information. Uh, we have our school board minutes for September the second, September the eighth, September the twenty-fifth, and September the thirtieth. If we could, we'll just take them all as one motion, so I need a motion to approve the minutes. Has been motioned by Dr. Schumate. Do I have a second? Has been seconded by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all invariably signify to the right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Next is, uh, trustee travel report. Uh, Ms. Cox, Mr. Sparks, Ms., uh, Dr. Schumate, up and over, go anywhere, flag. No traveling, all right. Um, now we have our discussion of store recovery efforts, basement cabin improvement plan, uh, for the CMSD. Uh, so now turn to Dr. Vaughn.
Okay, this time we'll have to see more than the other one, because I think, um, the store recovery at home, and we know, we don't, um, back station.
Welcome to Seymour.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I will update you all on the plant renovation or the plant regroup first.
Uh, she's passing out some details right now, so she'll be back to the mic in just a second.
Okay, on the roof roof for Hunt there, everything but the gym is dried in. Um, everything you see there in green, that has all of the roofing materials except for the top cap sheet and the metal trim goes around the edge of the, um, roof area. Um, the purple. The purpleish-blue area at the bottom, that is the museum building, and that building does have the cap sheet already on it. So it's just missing the edge trim around the, um, roof repair foot areas. Now, um, the gym building, they've been working through, they're doing the tech dome, replacing the tech dome right now. Um, on one side of the roof, it's a very tedious and slow process, just because it's dangerous. There's nothing really holding them up there, but a harness at times. So they're trying to knock all the old tech dome down. They ultimately finished with one full side of it, uh, at the end of this week, and will move to the next side, five, and the next week be completed with the, the next side of the gym building. Now, it will take some time to get back into the flashing around the, that like that area, because there are so many silights, the flames and flash around. The orange colors, the two orange on the, uh, next building and the two-story annex building, that's some area where steel was damaged. Um, from where the mechanical equipment went into the roof during the storm. That steel has to be repaired, and then they'll finish the roof in that area. So that, that's about, probably fifteen by twenty area on both those roofs, maybe a little larger, that needs, um, steel repair. And that's the steel, the bolt teeth for the, um, tech dome down that it attaches to. Um, those repairs should begin with the next week and a half, two weeks also, and, um, allow them to complete that proportion of that roof. They're looking currently right now, they're dead on for the roof project, it's November twelfth. They do have some days out there for CPD work, which, those CPDs work for these steel bolt teeth. Um, so that'll add some additional days to it. I think that's twenty-one days about it for those areas. And then there are some weather delays after the five half that we have not processed yet. That's the summer. Um, once this processed contractually, they'll be admitted to us. And, um, we will, we probably help together. And that follows and same with CPD advertised on February second, and now we advertise the acceptance of basement package for the school. And we will take this in November fifth. So as a group project is dropping out, the acceptance package will begin within the interior. The main, the majority of the acceptance, we will do a portion of it pertaining to any, any windows that we touched throughout the job. That will take place during the actual renovation project. But that way, we don't have to remove boards and do deep look at work. And we keep the building dry in for the main part before, um, we go forward with that type of, 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 of basement.
And let me just ask one, one quick question. Uh, I know you mentioned November twelfth, and then, but the total completion date, the estimate, depending on weather, anything else, is, said, the part is December or end of December?
It's gonna be mid. Right now, they have twenty-one days from the, um, CPDs that we processed, and that's money that was already contractually in there. But it was changes that we found along the way. Um, so there's twenty-one days related to those, and they do have some weather days in, some, you know, the weather days.
There's gonna be probably fourteen to twenty-one weather days, because they've had a lot of rain.
So there, there's some weather days that we do need to process. They submitted all of the weather days, and we reviewed through most of those, but we'll compose those into a change order and process everything at one time, so we can actually change the date once with the change order. So, but that is looking probably December fourteenth of the night area with the days that I'm aware of at this moment.
Uh, yeah, it's because on here, it says expected final completion late December.
Yeah, and that was.
So that's, it's not late December, it's true, it's early, or, I have to simply disconnect.
If you don't mind, typically, when they give you substantial complete with the job, there's always, like, they have to go back to detail.
Okay.
There's a bunch of lists, it's always have to be done, so, uh, when I say late December, uh, that's usually, that's, that's more accurate. They'll be done with the contract, substantial complete, mid-December. When they get done with the contract, it's probably the first of the year. And then to follow up on your, uh, question about the, uh, you said partial asbestos removal, is that just the preliminary start to it? Or partial is just, partial throughout, it's not gonna be a full?
Well, we, uh, this go-around will have all of the flooring in it, and there's some ceiling asbestos that's taking place. But we are not taking out any pipes that have asbestos, or all of the equipment in the boiler room. We were leaving all that in place until we have all the drawings completed and finalized for the renovation. So that way, we accurately take out everything.
But eventually, all of it will be?
Oh, yes. Once the renovation is complete, all of the asbestos will be gone. We're just, um, saving some of it for the actual renovation package, so there's not, people get far for the main part. Um, and then the last project is the Hunt renovations, and we've been working on this project, and we're aiming to finish for it throughout for advertisement towards the end of the year. And I do have, I've came out, but I also have a follow-up with, um, you want to put it up on the screen?
Yes, now, if you wouldn't pull it up on the screen so everybody can see it.
Okay, with the renovation, and now Taylor had indicated to me, y'all are looking at, for a sixth grade school?
We're gonna file it.
Okay. Uh, well, we looked at the layout for that, and it does fit, in that it's something that we're going in the direction of. Um, but we are looking at dealing, um, for all the buildings, we're gonna stick to what obviously is on insurance and any sort of code upgrades. And then we will have an alternate plan for the annex building to make those rooms larger. For, I think this is just showing that sixth grade layout, but we'll have alternate plans for the annex building, which shows the larger spaces for the career test and, um, career development areas, and adding in the back covered area and all. So we do have the alternate. But at this point, we're just going back in and renovating to existing conditions. And then, based on the final for the front two stories, we'll adjust those rooms upstairs accordingly, from where the office areas were. Um, to make those into library or locker classroom spaces, depending on the curriculum. Um, but we have found replacement for the elevator based off of the existing conditions that we still need to be there, and we've looked over, we have the parameters for a potential lift that we can add in as an alternate to the stage area and leave, uh, the ground. And then, um, we've looked at all of the other points of entry into the school. And how to secure it all on the interior, we've added a few quills at the, um, main entry area, so everyone funnels into the actual office area, and they're secured until they're permitted into the school. And we've also added, um, doors to where the gym and the cafeteria could be used at nighttime, so we'll still secure, uh, from, um, those areas.
Okay, so say that one more time, on, I said the cafeteria and then the gym, I see you go.
Yeah, and hall.
Add it up to one of the, the questions there. So, so the hallway that comes from, say, you look at the front entry of the building, and then this front's twentieth, and it comes to the great area, walks all the way down to the hall. I see doors there right next to the stairs. You say those will be sealed off?
Correct. That would be a new wall and doors that would, um, secure off the gym area from the rest of the building.
Another, uh, of these, uh, you don't. Sorry about that. Now, looking at the drawing here, if you come out of the cafeteria, that kind of breezy wing area that's quasi enclosed, and, you know, and, and, and it shows here that it's a covered walkway, so is that just gonna be a pure outside? It walk, the walk-in, or is it given a main structure the same way it is?
We are gonna have more of just the next there, covered walkway, if these buildings are gonna function separately. You know, if the, if the school is just up top, and they won't have need to go to the museum building, it would just be a covered walkway connecting it, but no enclosed, that whole thing.
But just metal awning, that type of structure?
Correct, either metal awning, which we were adding, the other metal awning, which is between cafeteria and the museum, allowing an entry for the two-story annex building for those career test spaces. That way, from the parking, you have a direct entry, and you know where to go at that point back to that facility.
I think that says, in the spirit of the urban generator, we will be running that safe.
The cafeteria here?
Right, and, and the door, the wall and the door next to the gym would also secure that cafeteria off from, at, at least the rest of the school. Um, and then the gym wouldn't have bought down.
Now, along the south end of the school, I know kind of how it's structured with respect to the walkway and the awning. That would be enclosed now to where you won't have access from the cut roof street to come on into that end of the building. Like, you'll actually have to come through the building to that end of the hall to come out to walk on this pathway, or, or would there be a way to, to enter that end of the school?
We will have, um, gates on that end with a, we'll have a covered walkway, that's basically like a brick colonnade. And, um, there's aluminum canopy above it, but it'll be sent in that will have gates for when, if you utilize that as a bus drop-off or parent drop-off, you would have gates there to allow the kids then that end of the building. But they, the gates would be walkable, so no one else could enter at any point of the day. You would all have to come through the main entry to enter into the school. As a non-school employee without any further access. And then the office at the end of the floor, where it could also be used at the drop-off point, um, with the sacking in that parking area. For the opposite parent or the parent or the likely for that area. We can even let this facility be utilized for.
Are you talking from the north end of the school?
Mm-hmm, correct. But with the basic middle school curriculum, there is enough space with the utilizing the complex building, so how is the function of that grade level?
Okay, um, how many classrooms will be on the, in the, on the sixth grade, um, area?
There's twenty-three, counting the smaller, um, inclusion classrooms, and then you have the library and the gym, and within that twenty-three, I'm counting band and art. Which would be the larger functions than the complex learning.
Now, just, excuse me, um, one question just I have to, along with what John just asked. So, this, will that take up the upstairs and downstairs of the primary building? Or will there still be the, if you're joking, upstairs, or will they be taking up space in the annex?
Um.
I think there, uh, this, Mr. Taylor, remind us for three, I'm, I'm sorry.
I think, so, so, this, uh.
I'm sorry. Mr. Taylor, um, attended the redevelopment meeting. Um, there's some things that are, um, just from wording that's incorrect, but is the logistics of what, where everything is supposed to be from the committee is correct, because the top floor, even when you look at page three, it's, it, it's segmented by, um, by electives and core academic areas. But the first floor was primarily going to be used for the academic space with, um, a current relevance, most of our classes are between one seventy-five and two fifty. And the upstairs room was going to be used for academic area and lab area, and he had cyber up there and office areas. Because there's plenty of office areas, right, and you done in the blue section on page two, was that, that office area on top of, uh, Hunt with beams? So we'll still have plenty of space for, um, for the W and the art and band spaces. I think we, we were back and forth as committee about what we were gonna do for that area. Um, because there's two, uh, two or one or two floors classrooms in that area, and we also thought about that being a computer lab.
And the only, the only reason I had to ask is, um, since I know I see different, which I know you're gonna have storage throughout all the buildings, but they haven't been taught, or initially, of the, what was the home next building being a big storage area, and then using all of the building space, but.
And, and we do have a theme with that, called maintenance, flash storage, and get out of the roll up door to that area, so we do have a theme with that also, um, within our plan.
So how much space will be workforce and other programs, and how much will be CMSD operation?
So all will be CMSD. So the, uh, college side is the sixth grade side?
Yeah, probably. The, the college side is the sixth grade side. So that's the side that the academic teacher academy dual enrollment for our student will be held. The career development will also be for, um, short-term, um, ten-week, um, high school development for high school students and adult education. So both will be utilized by students at different time. That's the, the area of the canopy is the transitional workspace we talked about, the short-term classes for regional businesses. So all will be occupied by students, our students.
Do y'all have any questions about that? Ms. Cox, do you have any questions?
No.
We'll save you a chart so you can see it. I do have a, a question about the, the, um.
Ms. Cox, I, I apologize, I heard a little mumble when we were speaking there.
I'm trying to translate it, like, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm struck, talk, okay.
Okay.
I don't, I don't listen.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, topple, uh, a question about the museum area. I think I missed a meeting when it flipped back to the way it was originally. At one point, we were talking about flipping the display area to where we have the meeting.
Where the meeting is, and the display would be in the back with additional.
So it flipped back?
That, that, and only the display area with the meeting area and the other.
I'm confused. I'm sorry. What, what is, what is it, uh, what, what is it? What, what is, what is it, uh, what, what is it, what, what is it? Is it what's on here, or?
I, I think that, that maybe, area we talked about entry was, it would be. An entryway to the museum is supposed to be towards the back of the building, is that a true question?
I'm just trying to figure out what's supposed to be in that space.
When we discussed it up as a committee, we did say that that would probably be a better space for. Um, I think we can talk about dual entry towards the back of the building. So if that's just something that we want to recommend, we still have some time to send that, those recommendations into the architect, make those changes. Okay, I, yeah, because I, I, I just don't think we finalized that.
Okay.
Okay. And I apologize for getting lost, but, um, so the way it's presented here that we're looking at it, has basically the layout that exists in the fore. So that's what the committee has recommended in the meeting, or that it was recommended to flip it to a different configuration.
No, no, she's talking, she's talking specifically to the interest of the museum.
No, no, I'm talking about the layout as we see it here. I mean, I see the entrance and everything, but, but, but the actual configuration, if you walked into this building, and you were up above it looking down, would it be the way that's presented here, or are the sides gonna flip?
No, it, it would be how it's presented as far as architecturally, the architectural design. The only big difference is some of the walls and current technical center we discussed, that some of those rooms need to be larger. And we were taking two, some, some of them to two classrooms, instead of one classroom, two classroom, and taking that a wall. That was, that's the committee's idea, but you can have to change it for your notes.
Yeah, right.
That's what the committee discussed. On, 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 we're technically annexed.
Oh, that's still off the museum, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Museum of the, the entryway was stated.
Yeah, and you were there too, but that, 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 that'd be, I, I, and we need to finalize that as, as a core. They, we've discussed, um, at one point in time in the committee meeting, that the entryway to the museum would be towards the back of the building, um, instead of the current location of the building. Um, and so that's just a matter of, of what the board decides. But I think that's what Ms., Ms., uh, Schumacher is talking about.
Okay, so when I think of the back of the building, I think of what's closest to Twenty-Second Street, on the backside.
Right.
And on that back corner, closest there, there was a roll-up door. So we're talking about there being a, a new entrance installed there, instead of where the glass entrance existed with the steps coming up to it?
Uh, I don't know if there's an additional en, uh, entry, but I, I forgot the logistics on why they wanted it there, what we wanted it there. So we just, probably just have to go back and look at our notes, and if not, just leave it where it is, but that's up to the board.
I, I would say for visibility purposes, the hour thing for ADA, because it's a, there's a, it's kind of drop-off, it's blowed off a little bit back there. Um, we really may consider keeping the entryway where it is.
I'm trying to think, it's, and I don't know why I can't figure it in my mind, but I know that there's a step to lead up to where the door exists on the side. And I'm talking about the, the, like, the parking lot side. And walk there, but isn't there also a concrete ramp for ADA there at that park?
Yeah.
So that, you wouldn't have to off, because you'd also have to do the same thing, if you shifted it down, you have to, if you're not having door, you're gonna have to take all that up as well.
Correct.
And then I know it's blocked in now, with respect to the roll-up doors, when we looked at it last time, on that back corner there, it's still the north end of the building, that you're gonna have to remove all that and, and then bring it all up and do that too. So, I mean, is there any reason that, I mean, from a functionality standpoint, that you would need to move the door from point A to point B?
That was our recommendation.
Yeah, not smart functionality.
No, she, she's going hard into, I was trying to tell Dr. Schumacher, I don't recall the rationale of why the committee went that. I don't, I don't remember why they, oh, about it being there, it's probably why Dr. Schumacher recommended, because it's discussed in committee, but um.
Yeah, I think it was discussed in context with moving the display area.
That's, okay, that.
Where the meeting room was.
That, you know what, that's exactly the reason, um, they were thinking about breaking down the space. Um, and having part of this, uh, museum has a revenue generator, and the other part is the museum, because the space is two large and two room. That was the reason we put between, for the, the two entrances. I do recall that. That we thought about one part of the museum, that, uh, one of the, the slider, and the other one being a rental space. So having two entries would assist with that, that they can insert it to the museum, that was the rationale, by default.
Alright, so just so I'm clear, the entrance will still exist on the west side of the building, coming from cafeteria, uh, with a covered walkway, it's just gonna be reconfigured as far as a covered walkway. Now, there isn't a covered walkway except where you just come out the hallway. It doesn't have a covered walkway that cuts in between the dining room and the park lot. Because right now, it's just a, a, a walkway. So there will be an awning that will extend all the way out to the corner of the building where the cafeteria area lies, to the parking lot.
We're proposing that in order for there to be a covered walkway all the way back to the two-story annex building. And we can do some of these as alternates, just for management.
And, and so coming off of the walkway to where the ramp and the steps currently exist, there'll be a sidewalk that'll be put in there to connect the two.
Correct.
Okay, and you have your main entrance that'll come into what's now the display area. And then you have that conference room for the front end there, or the west end of the building. Okay. You all understand, you all get in the? Yes, ma'am. And then, the only other question I have on, on this, uh, rendering is, I see where you've got the student courtyard area there, so can you kind of describe it? I mean, is it stepped up, is it just a flat concrete surface, or?
Well, we were proposing some set-up seating areas, just in case it was utilized for an outdoor learning place, or to take students outside, all depending on what the full function of the school was. But that was one proposal that we had put together, um, to still have the flow go from one building to the next, but have that center area functional.
Okay, as far as, you know, obviously the mechanical boiler room area, making certain students never have access in and out of that facility. How we did, I mean, would it be a scan in, scan out type of thing, or?
Oh, it can be just key, yeah, it could stay locked at all times, and that would be, um, would be your main hub for electrical for the most part. There was some mechanical in there, but that's gonna be your main electrical area for all the panels and to come into.
And the art plaza that's just on the corner of the home egg building, is that a concrete slab, or I mean, what is that, just an extended?
Just an outdoor, just flat, concrete slab area that we were just, for outside art project. If that works, we utilize that as an arm, right?
Uh, the elevator is, let's see, it's right across from the data room on page two, for now. And I see the elevator in, I see the elevator in the main building. Did I overlook the elevator for the annex building?
It is right behind the ladies' restroom to the, um.
Uh, okay, yeah, yeah.
I have one last question, weren't you able to carve out any, um, conference, but you said you talked about it, I don't know if we?
Hey, Sue, hey Sue, when you look at the layout, what do you mean? I think that explains Sue, the entryway, the, the, so it says display, and that's where we talk about the office, and that area is the cafeteria, and that, I hope.
So, so the conference room, you have Mark seven nineteen, about, is that just the space that exists there? Are you gonna expand it into the display area?
At this point, that is the size of that existing room. Oh, we can move that wall and even go to the end.
Why is that with the entrance?
Have the jacket, yeah. We have the jacket with that entrance, because you have the windows to either side. Um, but that is where the existing wall is at this point. It is a fairly large room, okay.
And realistically, now, that's two questions, I think, I was, have they captured the, 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 the four years?
And just one other question, bathrooms, I'm still over in the museum space, I see, and it may be my eye.
Ooh.
There's an old man's bathroom. So ladies.
That would be the one right below, would be, it, it's there.
Okay.
Metal with, sorry. And there's been the ladies, I apologize for that.
That's okay. We have three offices, we need no three offices. Just asking. Um, and there's no connection, direct walk-through between the meeting room and the lecture room. At one point, you get sort of thrown that idea out as a possibility.
That would probably be the way to do it.
There is.
There is.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I can't read architectural plans.
Yeah.
It's quite obvious.
The door, the, the swing, all the markings, so that's called the meeting room lecture room.
Okay.
Now, the other question is, you know, we have the buildings that we're looking at here, um, and then we have the parking lot that's on the north end, and there was discussion of the possibility of parking on the back, uh, of the annex building. But obviously, there's issues that might exist with respect to one-way streets, so as it stands right now, is that just not part of what we're considering?
I guess at this point, we haven't laid anything out, I guess that y'all, we can, I just didn't.
Or how, and I, and I guess, I mean, I know we have other parking lots that we've gotta address first, you know, across the district that first exists. Um, is that as far as the amount of volume that would be supported in the north end parking lot? You do the restribe, you may reconfigure the entrance and everything. How many spaces do you think will exist on that north end? Because I wouldn't think that there would be too many activities that they're doing at the museum or conference, or the conflict would, you know, or even after hours for workforce training or those things, the conflict during the day will staff personnel for sixth grade or other CMSD support. So how many spaces do you think will exist on the north end of the school?
Did not look at that when I came, I, I mean, I would imagine at minimum, we could get in probably sixty-five at minimum, but I'd have to look at the flow and the list of that, I, I didn't look at that before I came, I apologize. But, um, I would say at, at minimum, probably sixty-five plus nine on that. Um, we can design another parking lot in the back, we were just sticking within the parameters of the, the funding.
Sure, well, and, and I, and I guess what I'm looking at is, you know, obviously you have the north end department, and then you have the area that's now being installed to enclose the, the school area, that carries down to green space there at the, what is, you know, what football field. So there may be an opportunity there to build in some of the open gap space there, to build it up and then make more spaces down in that area versus trying to put a whole new parking lot on the backside. And maybe gain an extra fifteen spaces or something there to get us to eighty. Because I don't, and you guys see, I mean, anytime you see that, during the, during the course of there, I mean, you may have one van or twice a year, if you have eight more. Okay.
We can explore that, we can look into that and see how many more we can fit additionally within that area.
Alright, board, do y'all have any other questions on, on the design or layout? And it's, and as far as to, not to, uh, belabor the point, but as far as doors and windows and things like that, I know it was presented to us about, you know, more efficient upgrades and different things. What's the discussion on that? Because obviously, we realized that anything that would have been installed, that insurance company would have paid for, would have been probably more efficient, you know, energy efficient than what we had there for the store. Um, just by, does that, by, hey, these were installed, you know, twenty-five, thirty years ago versus what modern glass and doors would be. So is that part of, is, is, I guess, the enhanced proposal part of what is in this design? Or is it, we have a baseline of, if we go back, if this is what the insurance is paying for, what it's going to be, and this is being ultimate that could be considered?
I think we're gonna have a little bit of both of that, because we also have our patent history. And, um, our pub, I mean, they're adamant on putting back aluminum to the windows that are there. There's very few, there's very few window selections out there that will allow us to do that. And most of those are usually more expensive than the typical aluminum storefront windows that we would put in for our typical energy efficient school. Um, so we're gonna have to play between our paths and insurance, and I mean, we, we have the credit and all that, I think we're gonna have to do some alternate.
What I understand, I guess the question comes down to is that, and, and I'll just kind of ask Mr. Dunn, if he has a second, to make sure that this is correctly stated, but the contract, the insurance contract says, full replacement cost. And if we have guidelines that are requiring us to put back in a certain way, and it costs more than just like you just outlined, then that would be part of full replacement cost under our, our policy, correct, Mr. Dunn?
Um, yeah, I think so, but in light of some caution, I would say that you're running that by the insurance company, it just makes good sense.
Right.
So we can argue about it in the fourth one's game.
Right.
But I think you're right, I mean, if, if there's a government agency requiring us to do a certain thing, then that ought to be covered by the contract and part of the replacement cost.
Right, okay. So I guess that's the question, you know, board, you want to say differently, that we want to make sure that they understand, we're not just enhancing it because we want it to look nicer. Well, we do want it to be nice and better than, you know, a premium, but at the same time, that we've got to be another mandate. I know that's something y'all are working between, but before we go in, excuse me, and have packages put here for us to consider, we want to make sure that the others have checked the boxes and signed off that, hey, we understand that we would like for you to do it at this level, but you can't, so we're gonna cover it at that.
Correct, and we definitely want that too, before we put packages in front of you all, so. And we'll make sure everything is in place as far as that alternate is required.
Board, do y'all have any other questions, I have a few more. It's all looks great, we did a great presentation, thank you very much.
I think I did not capture all of everything we talked about, we didn't see the, the, the design.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Alright, um, so now we come to, um, let me make sure. Uh, while we're on this, uh, subject, you know, capital improvement plan for the CMSD, uh, and you'll see the meeting down below, but I know we've talked about it. We have our, um, facility audit, where we're gonna meet next, uh, Wednesday at nine AM at the parking lot of the high school. And we'll, and I, has everyone seen the kind of itinerary from school to school to school? Where we'll go, and we'll have it flow throughout the day as, as time allows us to. But, um, to be able to, to take those, uh, you know, everything from, you know, the outside, the big picture structural, you know, here from, hey, I know we've had presentations about procedures and different things, but also make notes of those, uh, parking lots, uh, you know, um, what's, what's some of the other things? Landscape and anything that enhance. Uh, parking lots, uh, you know, um, what's, what's some of the other things, landscaping, anything that enhances the school. Or that needs to be addressed, we, we're making notes of so that as we come back that Saturday on the, is it twenty-fifth? Yeah, twenty-fifth, and we can really letter out what our tier one, tier two and tier three processes are, I mean, our priorities are with respect to our capital improvement plans. Uh, from the structural to the mechanical to the cosmetic and everything. Uh, so does anyone have any other questions on that aspect of it, or want to add anything to it? Okay. Um, so next we go to our contract renewals update, item four, I assume we have any questions about the contract renewals update as presented? Okay, uh, next, uh, the discussion of bicentennial planning for Franklin Academy, I know we took a little bit of break as a committee after we worked so, uh, every, uh, so much effort toward our Union Academy Celebration and, uh, and segue into that. Uh, it was a great celebration, I thought, every aspect of it turned out really well, Ford, I know we all participated in, uh, the day of, and of course our parts, uh, in the celebration and, uh, from the production of, uh, the video. And of course, I've heard numerous people have spoken to me about how that they really enjoyed it, uh, watched the video and the students really stole the show. And so, uh, and I'm glad to hear that because I know they put a lot of work in Dr. Brownie and, uh, his, his app and, um, um, Mr. Yarborough and, um, and everyone else involved in it. Uh, Ms. Garrett, you know, all put in a lot of time and effort to help put things together, so we'll, we appreciate that. Um, and, uh, does anyone else have any comments or questions from Union Academy Celebration? It's a good time. Um, now we go to the CMSD rebranding presentation, and that kind of also ties in with, with number six about the meeting now. So, uh, Dr. Boden, will everything be ready to go next month for our meeting on the rebranding?
Yes, oh, sorry. Yes, uh, sorry. Yes, and changing that location will give us an opportunity to allow students to wear some of the merchandise for the board and for, I mean, to see, um, all of the changes that we made, the locals from the committee, so. Changing that date, it'll be a better venue for everyone and all.
Okay, and so that leads us to, uh, to items. Do you have a question?
Did I make it wrong?
Uh, the date is, is still gonna be on November the ninth as we had scheduled. Um, that was the day, did we change the day?
No.
No, it was, it was on still the ninth, but instead of having it here in Franklin in this room, we're gonna move it to the Cook Building Report. Uh, now, one other question is, in doing the change of the location, we initially had this meeting scheduled for eight-thirty AM. Uh, because a lot of times we go off to the MSBA conferences, they're gonna virtually issue it. So do we want to leave it at eight-thirty? Do we want to change it to eleven-thirty? Do we want to move to that? Uh, you know, I'm just asking everyone's opinion on it, so we don't have to come back if we want to change it. Eight-thirty still good? All right, so Ms. Cox, just so you understand, is that on this particular item, all will be, uh, consideration to change is the location. We'll still have it on November the ninth, twenty-twenty, at eight-thirty AM, and instead of it branded, it'll be shipped to the Cook Elementary Auditorium. So I need a motion to approve.
Okay, I got you.
Someone has been motioned by Dr. Schumay, still have a second?
Right.
Has been seconded by Ms. Young, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all favorably signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Next we go to, um, item seven, which we have discussion to approve in my, school board members to attend MSBA virtual ball leadership conference. Uh, Ford, I need a motion to approve. Has been motioned by Ms. Young, I'll make the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all favorably signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Now we go to consideration to approve the CMSD combined and combining FY twenty amended budget. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Boden, Ms. Rogers.
Hello, Ford.
Hello.
Hello.
Give us the good news.
The good news is that we ended up with a better fund balance than we did at the year end.
All right.
If you take eleven-twenty, eleven-twenty-one and eleven-twenty-two, it's around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we were able to put in our fund balance.
Awesome, that's a good start.
And, yeah, it's a great start. Um, we paid up our Q sub in the nineteen year, so some of that's reflected in this school year, just because of the whole, the money market summary for Q sub. And of course, our money market would go for itself into the, into this school year too. So that's kind of a give or take, you added one and you took another one off. But I hope I caught everything, it's kind of weird coming in and not having the whole year worth of, of entries that you did yourself, but I think that we ended the year really on a really good note.
That's always good to hear. All right, um, now as far as whether any. I don't want to use abnormalities, but were there any things that just stuck out in closing the books that we need to kind of focus on this, this year?
There are some of the things, and Ms. St. Clair is about to talk with, um, concern of the nineteen audit that did go into the twenty school year. And I don't know if they'll have an effect in the twenty school year, but just the timing of different things. And so, this literally, yeah, that's in myself, you know, we're making sure that we keep up, making sure we're making deposits on time or in a timely manner. Our journal entries are in a timely manner, want some like this closed, it's going to remain closed.
Okay. All right, um, and I know that was one thing that's brought up about child nutrition and loan and how they do indirect cost and some of those different things, I think maybe she's gonna present, um, in her findings.
Yes, and for that, it was really a, the timing issue. It's not that it was a problem, that, that the direct cost wasn't given to the district until this time of year. It's that there wasn't an entry stating that on our books and it was due, that it was due back to the district.
Right.
And I, I have that entry this year.
Well, I think the due back to the district means that our fund balance was understated by that.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, is there anything else, I mean, presentation wise on the combined and combining? Any other, Ford, do y'all have any questions about the report? Dr. Schumay?
Just one, um, do you think everything's now been fixed as far as coding things correctly? Wasn't that a problem by using the right term?
That was a real issue throughout the twenty school year, uh. I'll say that I really hope so, but I will also say that while I was working in it, um, just last week, I ran across a one more person. That I had not caught for the twenty school year, I caught them for the twenty-one school year, but they're coded correctly this year, but I had not caught them to correct it. Luckily I did before I closed the year. But, um, so I mean, I would want to say that I caught everything, but I can't promise that I did.
Well, that, that's.
I would.
Still, you feel like it's more under control.
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay. Good, well, thank you very much for that, um, and glad to see we've got more money than we had to start.
Yeah.
All right, um, and that, uh, and, and let me just ask this question, so in our fund mouse eleven-twenty, where do we stand from percentage standpoint? I know we have to have at least twelve percent based on our last change in policy from fifteen to twelve, so are we at twelve or are we exceeding twelve?
I, I would have to look at it and, and get back to you on that.
So is that something you could bring back to us coming up with this, you know, obviously, at this point, looking at, starting in November, you know, with capital improvements, I think whatever the board decides to do, we'd like to know exactly down to. We do have our twelve percent plus, we know we have two point eight million dollars, which is, you know, whatever it is. And so we've got some discussions we need to have with respect to that hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah. I'll say, if you want me to, I can make sure that I update that maybe on another basis, depending on your board resources.
That would be great, y'all know, I'm assuming, you never have too much information when you make the money, so.
Well, there is a report that I've been working on and, I, well, I have it ready, if you guys want me to, um, get this, whether to upload it to board resources. It's really just a comparison of cash in the bank across multiple years, it's something I like to look at, I like to know where we're standing. Um, right now, at the end of September, you know, our cash balance looks better than it has over the past two years in, in our district maintenance account. So that's something I like to keep in mind too, especially at this time of year, when we have a lot of our federal funds that we're having to front the money for. We have our EDLA program that we're having to front that money for, that's really scary waiting on reimbursement for something that size.
That's right. Well, and also, you know, one of the things we, we, we may consider, and I say that lightly, the board has to decide what it wants to do, but, you know, we did like an annual drawdown. On the money market account that subsides for an insurance company, and I know some of these, if we can really get fast paced into the year and into next year, we may want to make that a quarterly type of rotation. Just so that we know that we've got a federal insurance company, look, you know, we're down to our last X, and you need to go ahead and make some approval, you know, so that you can go ahead and send money, another tranche of money to subsidize. Whether it goes into the money market or whether it comes into some other, you know, fund balance. So versus going through the whole school year and have spent two and a half million dollars and then, oh, we've got, you know, two point two million, we're still three thousand, we can wait. We don't want to get into that side. So, is that okay with you, Ford? Okay. All right, um, any other questions on the, I'm anxious, I don't think so, so thank you very much. All right, uh, our next item is the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit, um, by Megan. Wait, we, yeah, we have to approve, I'm sorry, uh, good, good point there. Thanks for sharing with us the. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the combined and combining FY twenty amended budget? So, has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, do I have a second? Has been seconded by Ms. Young, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all favorably signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Uh, next we have item nine, which is CMSD FY twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit report, uh, is Megan St. Clair, is she with us?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Welcome.
I apologize for not being there in person, I'm a visiting.
No, it's no, no problem at all, and I appreciate you making time for us to, to go through, just to kind of give you a little bit of, um, uh, pretext. I did receive the mailing for, um, the audit information, uh, that you'd sent to me through mail, and I have, uh.
Okay.
I've given that to all the trustees with the exception of Ms. Cox, who isn't here present with us, but I'll be sure, she gets her copy after the meeting today.
Okay, that sounds good.
So just wherever you'd like to start, go right ahead.
Oh, okay, um, well, as you know, um, you hired my firm to come in and audit, um, for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty nineteen. Um, so we came in and, you know, applied audit procedures to be able to give an opinion on those financial statements, um, that there are, you know, you know. M- materially, um, not materially been stated, you know, um, fairly present the district's, um, financial position. Um, my, and to be able to give an opinion on those financial statements. And if you look on, I'm assuming everyone has a copy of the audit report, which is dated September twenty-eighth, um, twenty twenty.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So if you look at the, um, page twenty-nine one, which is the schedule of findings and question cause, which is, you know, normally what we want to discuss, um, the district wants to know. Um, the opinion on the, the basic financial statements and the major federal programs was unmodified. Um, however, we did come across some material weaknesses, um, or significant deficiencies that are in the findings that follow. Um, so in the financial statement findings, you'll see finding twenty nineteen zero zero one had to do with the lack of segregation of duties on the business office supervisor. Um, you could see that, that position, um, was able to do a lot of things, and that is an internal control weakness there. Um, and then we also had, uh, another, the second finding under the financial statements had to do with, um, insurance checks that were received. Prior to June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, however, they were not received and deposited until July twenty-third of twenty nineteen. Um, and then there was an additional one that was deposited later in December. So July first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth of twenty twenty would be the fiscal year twenty. So they were not received and deposited, um, and booked in the proper year, so that's a timing difference. Um, they should have, when they were received, um, you know, received, booked into the accounting system and deposited into a bank account. Um, so that is a finding there. And then we also had one that had to do with the closing entries, um, for child nutrition, which I heard it being mentioned having to do with indirect cost. And what happened was the money, it was booked on one, you know, the indirect cost was booked, but we didn't book the loan. We would have loaned money, um, from districts and then had to have paid it back. So those, because it's different opinion unit, those, that opinion unit, uh, in one area was understated and, and then like a general fund, it would have been overstated, the money hadn't been moved. Um, and that was just, uh, you could see an error, you know, part of that closing entry was done, the second part of it was missed. And then it, um, we did have one, one, two, we audited title one instead. And in title one, for some reason, in the grant application, um, you were to use the cost pool. Um, and that was, and I think in the federal end of it, like through NCAPs, um, you have it shown one way, but in the books, we were not utilizing that. So I don't know what the breakdown was there, there was a breakdown in, um, utilizing that, so that actually affected those, you know, those title grants, because they're in one consolidated grant application. And then additionally, um, we, when we come in, we have to test the side, um, just the financial statements and the federal compliance. We also have to test state compliance with state laws and regulations. And, um, we had two findings there, uh, one pertaining to the AdAlorm tax request. Normally the district fills out an AdAlorm tax request worksheet, and the law states that you can go back to any one of the three perceived immediate proceeding years. Um, for some reason, um, when this was done, they went back four years, um, so that was, you know, outside of the protocol of the law specifically spaced, it had to be one of the three immediate years, um, not four. And then we've had this one pop up quite a bit lately, um, PERS, when you hire retirees to come back. Um, the state law and PERS regulation states that within five days of employment, that, that PERS Form Eight needs to be submitted to PERS, and you have to have documentation to show that you submitted it. And we had two instances where, um, out of the three we tested, that they were not submitted within the five days. So that's an overview of the findings, I don't know if you had any specific questions you wanted to ask me?
Um, Ford is looking at the findings and information presented, do y'all have any questions? Um, I have just a couple, if y'all have. Um, a couple of questions I have, you know, on the, um, state finding number two that you were just talking about, since that's kind of fresh online. Um, I understand, you know, you know, certain person retires, they're drawn per, a retirement and different things. Um. How, I mean, as far as, is it, explain that in a little bit more in detail with respect to. How, I mean, as far as, is it, explain that a little bit more in detail with respect to, is there anything that we're, as a district, liable for? Did only those two instances? Was it one person that should have been?
Well, you know, they claim in the regulations that you could be fined. I don't remember exactly what it is. I'd have to look it up, but two hundred, three hundred dollars, but I've never seen that happen. My recommendation here would be, especially when it comes to retirees, just like with any company, before they start working, have them fill out all of their paperwork and, you know, get it submitted right away. And I know sometimes with school districts, it's a little different, but in other businesses, we need them in the classroom, they come in and that kind of falls through the cracks, you know. When they can get there next week, they'll fill it out. I think the big thing there is to try to get their paperwork filled out and submitted before they actually go into the classroom or whatever job that they're doing. Just have it submitted, you know, within the five days, within five days of their start date. So they can come in earlier and do it, you know, once you, if you have someone, let's say your board approved at the end of the year for the next year, they can come in at any time, you can set up and have them come in and do it. But it has to be done within five days after they start working. So they start on the first of August, with, you know, within that five days. After that, that paperwork needs to be submitted to PERS.
And in finding, in finding 2019-003 that talks about the indirect cost of, you know, being recorded, is, I mean, as far as what you recommended, is this where you had to make a material change to financials that could not be made?
Actually, in both cases, in the second finding and the third finding. The one that had to do with the insurance loss recovery, those check, and the child nutrition indirect cost. What happens is when you, one of the things I have to do is give an opinion, whether or not, you know, that the financial statements are fairly stated materially. And in order to be able to give an opinion, where it's unmodified, that I can say that they are fairly stated, I had to recommend an adjustment. Because this was a material adjustment, I recommended to the board, to the management, and management accepted it. I maybe not thought that the adjustment said that it could be properly reflected into the financial statements. So the financial statements are fairly presented.
Okay, and just kind of zeroing in again on 003. When that change was made, it obviously impacted what the FY20 statements would show. Is that, or maybe?
Okay, so what happens there is we have to make an adjustment to the due-to, due-from, the inter-fund loan part of it. And so now, what, what, give me a second. Holly, the new business manager, would do is since we had to make an adjustment and book it in, I gave it to her to make those adjustments. So then she will remove that adjustment, because with your inter-fund loans every year, when you close out, that's one of the processes of closeout. We look at our, you know, our inter-fund loans, our inter-fund transfers. Sometimes we have to transfer money so that we don't have negatives, like in 11730 or 1145. Those are funds that normally the district maintenance funds over to like district fed and at Rose for alternative school or even vocational. So every year, we have certain closing entries to make. So for, when she goes to close 20 now, she would have wanted to reverse it, but then she should see what adjustments need to be made and what transfers or inter-fund loans need to be made that for the 20-year ended. Anything that pertains to 19 needs to be reversed, as long as the money, once the money was moved, and I believe this has been corrected now on your end for 20, because once the money is moved, you would have reversed the adjustment. In this case, if this adjustment hadn't been made, so she'll go back, we made it, she'll reverse it, and then she'll look at what her loans need to be made for this year, should be.
Okay, so the fund balance that we just talked about, the 180, that would have included any outstanding loans that were due back for child nutrition to, okay. All right, so we're starting at square one with respect to fund balance. Okay, and I'm sorry, Ms. St. Clair, I was just questioning some of those details with Ms. Rogers, who's here with us.
No, that's okay. Anything you don't understand or questions you have, I don't mind answering at all.
Now, Board, do y'all have any other questions on the audit report? Okay, all right, well, thank you very much for these details and going through. Did you everything put together for us?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Dunn, we need to approve this, correct? I know it's not listed here for consideration, but we need to approve the audit. Okay, so Board, based on the information and the findings in the audit for the FY19, school year closeout or 18, I want to make sure.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, that's right. Nineteen closeout audit report by St. Clair CPA. I need a motion to approve as presented. Has been motioned by Ms. Young. Do I have a second? Has been seconded by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
The audit report is approved. Thank you. Next, we go to our MSBA 2021 School Board Legislative Survey. And for, everyone should have had a chance to go through and make their selections. And so what we'll do is I'll just go through one through the end, and if you want to just tell me, we'll start, if it's okay, we'll start from left to right, but I'll start with Ms. Cox, and then we'll go, are you going to start over here? All right, so we'll go Ms. Cox, Mr. Sparks, Dr. Schumay, myself, and then Ms. Young, if that's okay. All right, so legislation, Ms. Cox, are you, do you have your information? Okay, so I'll start with you on each one of the questions. So legislation that would support an increase, would increase school board member compensation?
Support.
Support, Mr. Sparks?
Support.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I'm opposed. And Ms. Young?
Support.
So it is support. Next, we go to legislation that would establish board member salary based on student enrollment. Ms. Cox?
Oppose.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I'm opposed. Opposed it is. All right, legislation that would increase qualifications for individuals running for the local school board? Ms. Cox?
Support.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Support.
I support.
Support.
So it is support. Next, we go to legislation that would restrict local school board, uh, control, excuse me, legislation, legislation that would restrict local control of school boards. Ms. Cox?
Oppose.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I'm opposed. Ms. Young?
Oppose.
It is opposed. Legislation that would provide incentives to teachers to stay in education? Ms. Cox?
Support.
Mr. Sparks?
Support.
Dr. Schumay?
Support.
I support. Ms. Young?
Support.
Legislation that would provide incentives to people majoring in education and/or people seeking an alternate route license? Ms. Cox?
Support.
Mr. Sparks?
Support.
Dr. Schumay?
Support.
I support. Ms. Young?
Support.
It is support. Legislation that would allow for a salary supplement for experienced teachers willing to relocate to F-rated school districts? Ms. Cox?
Support.
Mr. Sparks?
Support.
Ms., Dr. Schumay?
Support.
I support. Ms. Young?
Support.
Legislation that would allow school districts more flexibility with virtual learning during non-pandemic times? Ms. Cox?
Support.
Mr. Sparks?
Support.
And Dr. Schumay?
Support.
I support. Ms. Young?
Support.
Support it is. Nine, legislation that would allow school employees with proper training to carry guns on school campus? Ms. Cox?
Oppose.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I oppose.
Oppose.
Ms. Young, opposed, so it is opposed. Legislation that would change the public education formula from average daily attendance to total enrollment? Ms. Cox?
Oppose.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Support.
I support. Ms. Young?
Oppose.
So opposed it is. Legislation that would fully find the public education funding formula? Ms. Cox?
Support.
Mr. Sparks?
Support.
Dr. Schumay?
Support.
I support. Ms. Young, you're supported. Support it is. Number 12, legislation that would create a structured statewide approach to quality early childhood education? Ms. Cox?
Support.
Mr. Sparks?
Support.
Dr. Schumay?
Support.
I support. Ms. Young?
Support.
Support it is. Thirteen, legislation that would eliminate the requirement of passing an end-of-course test to graduate? Ms. Cox?
Oppose.
Let me read it again. Legislation?
Support.
Okay, Mr. Sparks?
Support.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I'm opposed. Ms. Young?
Support.
So it is support. Legislation that would require school board members to be elected? Ms. Cox?
Support.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I oppose. Ms. Young?
Oppose.
Opposed it is. Legislation that would change the school board election law so that all school board members will stand for election slash reelection appointment slash reaffirmment in the same election? Ms. Cox?
Support.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I oppose. Ms. Young?
Oppose.
Opposed it is. Sixteen, legislation that would allow public funds to be diverted from public schools to non-public schools, home schools, or virtual schools by means of voucher tuition, tax credits, or scholarships? Ms. Cox?
Oppose.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I oppose. Ms. Young? Seventeen, legislation that would allow public charter schools and districts with successful accountability ratings of A, B, or C? Ms. Cox?
Oppose.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I'm opposed. Ms. Young?
Oppose.
Opposed it is. Legislation that would allow students who are attending schools rated C, D, or L to transfer to schools rated A or B? Ms. Cox?
Oppose.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I'm opposed. Ms. Young?
Oppose.
Opposed it is. Legislation that would provide an income tax deduction for parents who homeschool or send their children to private school? Ms. Cox?
Oppose.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I oppose. Ms. Young?
Oppose.
Opposed it is. Legislation that would create a tax credit scholarship, create Tax Credit Scholarship Act, allowing individuals to make tax-deductible donations to a qualifying scholarship organization that provides scholarships to students who attend K through 12 non-public schools? Ms. Cox?
Oppose.
Mr. Sparks?
Oppose.
Dr. Schumay?
Oppose.
I oppose. And Ms. Young? All right, so next we come to 22, 21, 22, and 23. And it asks, 21 asks, what are your board's top, your board's top one or two legal legislative concerns? What are your board's top one or two legislative concerns? The board, are there anything? I mean, I would say one, reduce funding. I think so.
I'm unsure. I'm unsure exactly what we're supposed to do, like just pick a number from?
I think you can use some of the ones that they're presenting, if those are, you know, some of the rise, but, you know, and I think the funding you may be in the other, the reduced funding for education. This top there.
What did you say, number one would be?
I said number one, reduce funding for education is the top concern.
What's number four?
Number 21 is asking us to list our top one or two legislative concerns. And so?
Is that number 11, what you're saying, forty-five, seven, eighteen?
Well, I mean, that could be one of, I mean, that could be related to that particular one we just discussed, yes. But it's not necessarily saying we have to list it exactly how it was in the, in the survey. We can just come up and say, these are some of our one or two top concerns. Is there another one that you can think of that is a top concern?
I have one.
Yes, Ms. Cox?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to discuss one of the requirements for passing the end-of-course test and no specific stipulation in regards to children passing the course at the end of your coursework, more so than a specific test in order to graduate.
Okay, so?
I mean, they totally, you know, they have passed, you know, and you're satisfied, passed back and with the, in the grades for the end of the course itself. And not necessarily, there'll be a subject area test.
So basically, to put this down correctly, it would be, if I understood correctly, is that students being unable to graduate because they're unable to complete or pass the end-of-course test, is that?
Uh huh, yes. And if they pass coursework and have met all the other requirements.
So there's been several, a lot of litigation about students getting a, let's just say, a C in U.S. history, or got these, these, or off the coursework, and then when it gets to the exam, they don't pass the exam, therefore they don't graduate. So she's saying that the coursework or the class, if that's passed, that that should be an indicator they mastered the material instead of assessment. Is that correct?
That's it, I think. That's it.
Okay, is there another legislative concern?
I would say diverting non-public schools.
I think that might, for one, you were first going to definitely any?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily, I would put those two separate, just to make certain we don't want to cut, but then?
Any legislation that diverts public school money to non-public schools.
I also wanted to mention that it's more fiscally advantageous for us to have average daily membership than it is average day attendance.
Formality.
Formality.
Right, I mean, like the total of versus if they only come six, seven, eight degrees per day or something.
It's benefit to the district.
I think that ended up being three, two opposed on that.
Yes, yes.
Diverting costs to one to?
Which number was it? Ten, yes.
All right, so do we want to go back and revisit that particular line, Board? Um, legislation that would change public education formula from average daily attendance, which is what it currently is, to total enrollment? Which simply means is that we adopt for students who aren't here versus if our head count is X, then we get money for all X, and we don't give any of those offset. So we don't see the reduction in funding. So it was three to two, do we want to reconsider that or leave it as it was answered?
I'm pretty much general.
Okay, Ms. Cox, did you hear the discussion here? On, on number ten, it states-
About eighty-eight?
Yes, ma'am, verse to total enrollment so that there would be the offsets for students being absent or any other, um, I guess money called back by the state or versus a total head count, these are your numbers, this is how much money you get appropriated for the, of that student.
Yeah, I understand. I'm sorry if y'all can't get my understanding. Um, I only, I have a question is, is we only look at the total and whatever. There are some districts with large enrollments, so we should give them more funding. A lot of companies, that the districts in rural areas that have child development. Isn't that how that's going to work?
Well, I mean, I mean, that's the way it's going to work, e- anyway, uh, even with the, the system that currently exists, except for if you have students who miss a lot more of class, you know, that might have various reasons that, that they're missing school, then you're going to have more offsets in a larger population that, yeah, they may have access, but it may not impact you as greatly versus if you have five thousand students and, you know, you have, you know, uh, you know, your percentage ends up where you're averaging, where it's almost like you're having forty-two hundred students show up, whether you're getting money and everything's getting offset versus then look at, say, when you've got five thousand students, you get all your money on five thousand students, and if they do miss a long wait throughout the year, you don't have those offsets with money to take it back. So-
Okay, I see that call. Okay then.
Did I explain that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, so-
Okay, I see.
So do we want to reconsider or leave it as it was answered? Okay, so, so Ms. Cox, how do you vote on number ten?
Number ten, I don't know.
Uh, legislation that would change the education formula from average daily to total enrollment? The board?
Support.
Okay, Mr. Spar?
Support.
Dr. Schumay?
Support.
I support. Ms. Young?
Support.
All right. So that's the only one that I changed there. Uh, twenty-two says, what are your board's top priorities for the upcoming legislative session? What do we want, what do we think we can make to do, I guess? What is that?
Fully funded?
Yeah.
Or, and then earliest?
Focusing.
I put down fully funded education, and I think that's a good point there is, um, I guess would be to recruit or institute, you know, of a sound early childhood education.
Basically, number twelve, yep.
Okay.
Structured statewide approach to quality early childhood education.
So.
Education, okay? All right, and then the last question is, do you feel there's too much time spent on testing instead of teaching?
Not qualified to respond.
It's a question we should defer to.
I think we did that-
I did that last year.
Yeah. They didn't have any tests last year, so.
I, I'm going to talk about that a little bit, about the presentation, planning, and other things, so I think, um, overall, we're asking, I, I, I think we should, we should take time, I would take both. Um, and so, uh, I can be provocative with the board's names or cases.
Hmm?
Um, and, 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 and anyone?
Okay.
I, it says time, and when, when we, when they say time, um, that they're talking strictly about, um, planning time for teachers or focus, and so I said, if time is a replacement focus, I think you all can, um, answer that question in tight with the sentence, so it's kind of an ambiguous question, you know? So, uh, I just write how you all feel, but in general terms, I don't want to kind of sway what you, what you're thinking, but, um, there's some things that I'm going to talk about shortly in my presentation that kind of discusses that, just, just tap, tap a little bit on it, this relates to time, um, especially with our current schedule, and, uh, we can go from there, but maybe if you just talk about focus, this relates to, um, teacher retention, um, not only in Mississippi, but throughout the country, um, and assessment, and, um, you know, in general, um, is, is our current assessments relative to twenty-twenty? Are the things that we're measuring as we look at a portion of a graduate, are we saying that they pass these fourths test in order to be college graduate? Is that an effective metric? That's the way I'll think about it.
I mean, you know, I know how we answered last year, and I think that was a good explanation, Dr. Bot, but, you know, I don't think the board's in that position to make that determination. It's really more an administrative, operational aspect, so I think, you know, it's asking us, do we feel there's too much time spent testing instead of teaching? I mean, Ford, unless y'all have something you want to put differently, I'd say that would be more of a superintended administrative role to make that conclusion, because they know what efforts go into it, and we're just brought the results essentially.
Obviously, I didn't listen to this one.
Right, right.
I was just trying to prepare.
Ask the other question.
It's funny, asking several things, that's why I don't want to answer directly.
Oh, no, that's fair.
All right, so, um, so I have all of our answers, um, captured here as we talked about them, and I'll give this to, uh, Ms. Woodard and try to clean up a little bit, give Ms. Woodard some deep process to, um, time process to MSBA by cutoff, uh, which is two days from now. So we got it done. All right, so any other questions on it? If not, uh, we'll move on to, uh, the next item, which is principal updates. Uh, we're here to have Dr. Abbott's superintendent presentation.
Great, I'm just going to give a, a really quick overview of some things that we detailed and already made this week, um, last week. So this is our new logo, and, um, this is how I started the presentation, just wanted to give you a small synopsis of some things I shared with the public. You did that earlier?
No.
Okay. Okay, um, I talked about COVID nineteen, um, at, in the Columbus Municipal School District, and I called the March to May, uh, period, the M and M period, in which we learned a lot about distance learning connectivity, and um, I also told them that, um, I clearly thought I understood what poverty was, but I think we had a better understanding during that time because of our students' needs from the March to May. I think we had some very good intentional, um, problem solving during that time to be able to come up with an effective plan for August. Um, one of the things that I feel like kept us going, and kudos to our food service teams, that, um, we kept, continued to feed our students in the community, um, from March to, um, almost the end of July, um, that was very important. Um, had the opportunity to meet with about thirty, forty superintendents across the country yesterday, and a superintendent from Finland. Um, she's over the Education Ministry there, and they said that all of their students every day receive free food because they feel that is of value. And so we talked about how here, when students receive food, it issues it because it's a poverty issue, not because it's a value that we need to feed kids that come to school every day. But we felt like it was a value in our school district, so we continue to feed our students. And it's one of the entities that continue, that helped us to keep going. Uh, we also discussed, um, all the mitigation, um, information, uh, related to disease prevention for COVID nineteen and the planning as relates to PPE, um, and how extensively we started to look on that, um, right after, um, we were out of school between the March to May period. Um, like I said before, a lot of strategic planning, um, had a lot of time to really look at plans, um, and think of effective and efficient ways to bring our kids to school. Um, I think the survey and feedback from the community and from our employees really helped. It's going to help us as we progress throughout this, uh, um, disease prevention status as a community. And so that helped us come, uh, to, um, having, um, made good decisions for our students. Um, we talked about a little bit about connected, I think, equity in education, and how it's a big order now, um, and this has been an issue not only, um, in the country, but throughout the world, um, as relates to connectivity, um, food and feeding programs and other, uh, resources for, uh, students. Um, one of the things we talked about, would lead your question to this, we talked about time. It's something we talked about yesterday in our superintendent's alliance meeting, is that, um, high performance jurisdictions usually plan more than they teach. So, um, I talked about economy and scale, but if, if a teacher had more time to plan, are they more effective? Um, and looking at the time and amount that they're teaching a student with our hybrid schedule, so I just want to tell you, as I go into the classrooms throughout the district, I'm seeing very effective teaching practices, especially with our students between regional high group. Um, and that our teachers are, are building their teacher capacity because they have time to plan, and we're working on, um, professional learning communities. Um, being more of a global community, second grade planning, fourth grade, um, literacy immigration, um, high levels of instruction. Um, and, and I, uh, directly attribute that to them having more planning time in order to improve instruction. Um, so, so we'll get about professional development, and also, like I said, we started our professional development during this March to May period. Uh, I feel like we're the, one of the few districts that kept going and continued to, um, prepare our students, our, our teachers for the fall with technology training and instructional training. Um, as you, the teacher of the principals present, and I'll give an overall synopsis about the learning apps from March to May. Um, and that, that'll be a little, um, some of the details will come, that will come later. And, um, overall, what we've learned as educators is that our, our, um, our teachers need more, uh, time to plan, uh, and they'll be teaching the faculty during this time, it's been a great attribute to the district. All right, next. Um, things that came out of the COVID nineteen that I thought that was positive was the, um, Senate Bill, um, three zero four four is at the Disaster Act, which we will have, close to a $10 million bill that we have to front the money in the next four to five weeks. So we're preparing for that, making plans for that. We're also working diligently, we'll need tomorrow morning to, as far as expenditures for Hospital seventeen eighty-eight, which is connectivity. That was fun to, um, since, oh, it's about two weeks ago, so we have very little time to turn over for the federal deadline, but we are working on that. Um, and then I talked about the London Learning Academy, um, the Hunn Experience Day with the W. So I just made a statement in front of the media, and just went, kind of went from there. So I'll, I'll, that's getting that information out, but I was just explaining some of the things that we were doing. The Hunn facility, and primarily that, that one side was being educated, and we, we are, um, strongly holding that this would be a, a good talent to recruit teachers at an early age of sixteen to seventeen, who do enrollment courses for, for, uh, for education programs, and having those students to work with students that early in order to get, um, a teacher assistance degree, or a, an associate's degree academically, if you're going to teaching, and so that is a primary focus, because we feel that is something we need in order to recruit teachers to come back to our community to teach our kids, so that is the biggest priority as related to the Hunn Experience Day Center and the, um, collaboration with the W. The big focus on the career side is giving our students CTE courses that are, that are relative to the need and need of local industry. Short-term course, not like our current technical center, but ten-week short, short-term courses, or courses that we, we are not offering, not heard for in the technical center, that are needed for immediate employment needs in our, our local area. So we will, our students will be working on CTE, dual enrollment, on the other side, the EMCC and that collaboration, so that's kind of what we'll just discuss. And that's why the building is separated the way it is, and we discussed that with the Development Committee. Uh, Mississippi Code of Academy will be returning to the district. I really don't like this math, I feel like I'm- Um, uh, it's returned to the district, only the Catholic Union Academy. We started the recruitment process, um, and worked with, um, the community, um, I mean, with the high school and the, uh, organizations, the Code of Academy organizations, start those students to get that certificate, the whole thing that they will start in January, the completion date being in July or next to December at Union Academy. Um, cybersecurity, you and we have a lot of kids that are in EMCC, um, uh, Mr. Chapman over that. Um, that's been a great program. We're also thinking about adding a CTE with drafting, a pad for our students. That's going really well. Um, the hope with cybersecurity is that for our students to have twelve hours before they leave high school and be very ready to be gainfully employed, and to finish their associate's degree at EMCC, so that collaboration is going well. And we continue to have coding for K eight. We also have worked on a collaboration that you approved in July for the Mississippi School of Math and Science, we started a great AP statistic, statistic courses and, um, out with the pre, we are working to get a four core area certification for MSMS with AP courses, meaning that a student before they graduate would have completed and passed four AP courses, we're going to graduate based in AP courses, we have prerequisites that we're working on, doing one course at a time to work on that collaboration. Um, so then I talked about the Henry Development Committee, um, CMS ACT Club, which is going well with this week, and have our students enrolled in that. But the real focus of, um, getting our students prepared for the big National Makers Scholars. All right, uh, we also talked about K twelve, social and emotional learning, how there's been a focus throughout the district with, um, Ms. Chapman, and we really, uh, really seem to break lessons with our students and dealing with the current issues and uncertainty of our time. And we continue to provide technology training for teachers. We can go now to the I rating. So, uh, the rest of the presentation is like history, opinion, and all of this stuff, so. All right, so I'm just going to go to slide six and fourteen. So we can go to slide six first. Okay. All right, first of all, data is going to be criteria and reference, um, data, and it'll be in standard review, and so they'll detail a little bit more individually from the school side, how the data is going to be, uh, going to, as far as, um, schools. This is just some information about, um, how do students tested in math and reading? And then this is page six. Um, you can look at our historical national norms from eighteen nineteen, this is some of the information that I put in the supplement list, and then twenty twenty-one, well, norm reference data, which starts in national tested areas, population, and then our current data. So you can see the changes in the learning gaps, well, that's kids that are in the green, yellow, and more students in the red. That is math. All right, and then we go to that's probably a level, and they'll, they'll detail this, so I'm going through the slides very quickly, because you're going to get some of this from the individual principal. Just wanted to do a quick overview. This is the reading, the whole historical national norms, and then the national tested population data, fall twenty twenty-one, and then our district average. So you can see the, the difference from eighteen nineteen and overall, so, uh, when they give their standard view, you'll be able to tell with a view of construction what we, our projections will be, used to call the report predicting efficiency, and without further ado, will let Ms. Billy, it's, uh, Ms. Billy.
Um, let me ask you just one quick question, uh, the call line section. When you started the presentation and showed, I guess, like, the number of students who tested were like twenty-one hundred, and then when you did the math, it was about two thousand, and then with reading is eighteen hundred, why is there a difference in, in numbers?
Um, when she captured this data, she said it's me about probably three, three, four, three, I mean, this is due to that first possibility of the test. So I would say, look at the individual numbers that they presented.
Okay.
Please, please note to you that this is only a pre-K eight, I'm due to have to put some night bridges in this program, so it's not the entire district.
Okay, well, no, I, I didn't expect that, wrong, total wrong, I mean, when it started, it was like twenty-one hundred, I, I was just want to make sure that I understood that part of it, but-
And maybe that, they have classes, it's cool, but they'll, they'll have, because that suits coming, those data, that data is popular, so, Ms. Ms. Smith?
Welcome.
Hello, good afternoon.
Hello.
Okay, okay. Good afternoon, how are you all today?
Good afternoon.
All right. It's been a while, um, delighted to be before you today, giving updates on the progress of book elementary- on the progress of Hook Elementary School. I will be combining my regular presentation along with my monthly presentation. Since um school improvement, we we are keeping the same status as the previous school year. So um instead of us doing a monthly presentation as I did in the previous school year, we are required this year to do a quarterly presentation. So um unfortunately, I won't get, won't have opportunity to see every month, but every couple of months I will be able to. Uh, delighted to give an update. We are going to continue with our same goal that we had in previous school year. Um, with the proficiency goal in E L A, math and science at forty-four percent. Um, to start off, the school highlights, um, despite the pandemic, as we are, as we have transitioned back in school, our number one priority is safety and social emotional to help um ease the transition for the parent and the students and my teachers. I have to make sure I take care of everyone. So uh PBIS, that's for the students and the faculty. We are continuing our monthly PBIS celebration. That's a combination of um academic discipline and attendance so that um we can work all together. Also, we have a PBIS for my staff. This month, the PBIS will be a social distance and dance by grade level so that we can ensure that the students are safe, but they are able to have that social time since we are not moving from class to class like we did last year. So that they'll have a little time to socialize with their other class, uh, their other peers in their particular grade. The PBIS for the faculty, it doesn't take a lot to please my faculty. Um, whether it's a gene day or today we have full truck there. There's different things to show that I really, really appreciate the hard work and dedication. Continuing to celebrate students' academic growth, encouraging others to work hard academically. We are continuing to have a standard space environment, continue with positive incentives and a fun learning environment. And the purpose of the fun learning environment, you know, the the little kids, they hear the news, they listen to their parents. We don't want them to worry about COVID. We don't want them to worry about the different things, the the adult issues. When they step into that building, we want them to know that we love them, we're here to teach them and just to preoccupy their their mind so that they can learn and enjoy and their reports coming back the next day. Um, very pleased to still have the partnership with my church across the street. They would fund our cook store that we had last year, so we modified the cook store. So the cook store is in the classroom, so they made little bins and they deliver it to the classroom and they update. I'm going to pull this down, just a little bit of this up and bring it a little bit. They update those bins every two to three weeks, so we're still continuing our cook cash to promote attendance behavior in academia. The picture on the left is an example of some of the things in classroom cook store. And the students are able to see what they're working for. And so if it's a big tenant, I was teaching them a little bit of economic to save the cook cash so they can purchase some of the larger items. As I stated before, safety will always be our number one priority. Um, we still have our price management plan, although we are in our hybrid schedule. We still have our fire drills, we still have our tornado drill and ensure that um the students are safe. Every adult that enters the building, they must answer our COVID entry questions. If you have to decide by the building, there's a QR code they have to scan it, they answer those questions. Temperatures, temperatures are checked every day, including myself. The only people who are allowed in the building are C M S D employees and um the students. As students based on individual needs, sometimes we have to have parents come into our safe site and we provide assistance to those parents on a one-on-one basis. We allow those parents to come into our safe site uh in the back so that we can assist them if they're having some technical difficulties with their online learning, but we can continue to provide that support for the parents. Masks and face shields all day, very, very delighted. You know, before we got started, I said the little kids are not going to wear the mask. They love the mask. Everybody has their different mask. We can have different types of conversations about the different masks. But most of the time we may say, sweetheart, pull your mask up or gesture is not an issue. Uh, that hand washing, sanitizing and so forth. No class changes, uh, students stay with their group. Um, special classes, the teachers, my special area teachers, they record their lecture and we deliver it in the classroom. So that the lessons being recorded, I'm able to use all of my extra staff to help us deliver instruction, uh, small student to teacher ratio. A few pictures to show you about the culture. Although we are in the midst of a pandemic, high level learning, hands on. Um, you know, we make sure we're sanitizing and so forth, so the students are able to um receive standard space instruction that's related to everyday life. A little bit about our hybrid learning. High level engagement is in person and is differentiated. Since we have a small number of students attending each day, we are truly able to provide differentiated instruction to each and every student every day. Whether it is a student that's below grade level, we're able to deliver intervention. If it's a student who's above grade level or on grade level, just because you're on grade level, we're not going to say, hey, you're good, you don't need to think that shit. We're giving them that small, uh, the individualized attention so that we can accelerate their learning and push them to the next level. We also, um, they used to out in the classroom as needed so the students are able to go out to get some fresh air and um learn, especially when it comes to science and E L A. Our virtual learning is still standard space, high level instruction and differentiated. Um, so thankful for my parents. Parents, it requires a high level program of engagement for the students to stay up to date with the virtual learning. The parents, they send their questions, whether it be a chat, a call with teachers or if they call my office, my office staff uh does an excellent job of assisting parents if they're having some technical difficulty with uh their students getting along and so forth. It is also building the teacher's capacity. Some of the younger teachers, the newer generation, they're used to all the technology, so we're able to use them so that they can teach some of the veteran employees like myself how to present the lesson different ways. But majority of our recent graduates, they just be majority of their college instruction um on technology and so forth. So they they have really, really stepped up to help us um figure out different ways to present the instruction so that it's still one grade level rigorous and so forth. And this is just a brief snapshot of one of my fourth grade classes. Um, this is their science lesson, the teacher was talking about tornado and I snapped that video. Now to the data. Present the data in two different ways. This is by grade level and we're comparing. This is beginning of the year. The beginning of the year lets us know are they ready to receive the grade level instruction. We compared it from the previous year to this year. I even wrote it down. I I wanted to look at the difference between our virtual students and our hybrid students to, you know, as we continue to ensure we are providing uh equitable education. So this lets us know are they ready. Now, as expected, there are key gaps in there because we do realize that those, that our students missed the, oh, okay. They missed the last nine weeks of their previous grade of the previous year. This data, this beginning of the year diagnostic data, it has been shared, it has been discussed with each individual student. It has been discussed, and when I say discussed, it's a communication. One of the things we're working on to improve this year, communication is a two-way stream. Not just to print something off and send it home to the parent. Since we have a small session, we're able to call several parents this day and we and we have a community, a communication, a discussion. Uh, this is where your child performed. These are some things that you can do at home, mom, dad, or the family. These are some things that you can do more, are you able to do? Some of the parents, you know, they're better, they're they're give up, they're more honest with us with us when I'm in conversation. Sweetheart, I don't understand how to do that. Well, let me show you, let me help you when we figure out one way, one or two ways the parents can help us at home to address their child's next steps and weaknesses and so forth. So the next view is the standard view. The standard view lets us know this is how these students will perform on grade. Their current grade level standard is at the end of the year. All of our standards are end of the year standards, so it shows us the comparison. On the left, it shows um where Hook Elementary was for the last school year. Over on the right, it's the current school year. And as Dr. Mabat stated, our goal is to increase the percentage of students who are scoring in green. There's a slight decrease. Um, there's a slight decrease with the number percentage of students who scored in the red who were uh at tier three, more than two years scoring below the grade level. A large chunk of students who are in tier two. Again, we're able to provide interventions, intervention remediation to each and every student so that we can reach uh uh assist them to reach their goal. Same chart broken down for math, beginning of the year. This lets us know what percentage of students are ready to receive grade level instruction. Broken down by hybrid inverted so that we can see cause my professional development or my teacher culture that I deliver to my hybrid teacher is going to be a little bit different than the delivery of instruction for my virtual teacher so that we can ensure that that we are presenting instruction to each student at the same level and rigor level. The standard view for I rated, these are how the students will perform on the end of the year. Now, standards, the left is from last year, the right side is for this year. Last year, we were at nine percent of tier one on grade level. This school year, we're starting out at five percent. So when I had a discussion with the teachers and we talked about it, we have the opportunity to show tremendous growth and our goal is to grow. Again, individual conversations with each student and the parents so that we can help them move to their next level. This moves into the M T S S and the suburbs. Uh, our school improvement label is additional target school improvement because of our black, of my black suburb. Majority of my school falls into this black suburb, so it's pretty much the entire school. Interventions for all students. And this is a picture of one of my teachers who's providing interventions for one of her uh hybrid students. For our virtual students, they receive interventions as well. We have to do those one-on-one so as far as privacy. So we schedule that time, the students log in on Teams on the day that they're not scheduled to log in live with their regular classroom instruction. So they're not getting behind or missing regular classroom instruction. Any questions or comments?
Um, I just have one question. Can you go back to the slide that shows the last year and then current year in the virtual and hybrid breakdown, which are?
You want the math up here?
Uh, let's do, let's start with the math.
Okay.
It's already there. So if I'm looking at the, in reading this correctly and I see first grade last year and then I look at the second grade for this year, it went from a hundred percent to forty-two percent. Am I looking at that correctly?
No, sir.
Okay.
What I did, I I compared, I compared the same group of kids. So I did first grade for nineteen, twenty, those students were in kindergarten last year. But they are first grade this year, so I compared their data to the same group of students, not my grade.
Okay, but when I look at the second grade, I see eighty-eight percent, forty-two percent.
Yes, sir.
And eighty-seven percent to sixty-one percent, fifty-seven to forty, and seventy-two to fifty-three. I I guess what I'm trying to just look at is I, I mean, I think you presented it really well and stuff, but that kind of indicates the amount of slide that occurred from March to May to where we're at now. If I'm reading that on grade or or above, so that would tell me that eighty-eight percent of the students was on grade or above last year and then we had the break in school cycle and we came back and went and platformed their own. Now eighty out of eighty-eight percent, basically half of them are at that same level on grade level or or above. So now they're either still. I I mean, I'm in the math section, that's what I'm reading, the differential presenting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The data is, I mean, the data is what it is. Now, one thing with math is.
I'm not criticizing you. No, I just make sure I understood your chart correctly.
Yes, sir.
So.
Um, but the 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 data is is correct, um, and I just, I just want to be completely transparent with everyone. Now, one thing with math, if this, um, as we're reading this well, you have to practice these skills. Because if you don't practice them on a regular basis, um, there will be some regression. Now, as I stated before, we we were anticipating some regression, but you know, as far as identifying strengths and weaknesses, math is a weakness for us. And so in addressing this, we're we're making sure that the teachers understand the standards. They're using their scaffolding documents to go back to, and have presenting intervention to pre-prepare, to pre-present the students with those prerequisites and to help build their fluency and the standards as we're teaching them. It will work for us to do this, although students are not there every day. We're going to have to have everyone who's involved to help us um achieve this goal.
Well, and and I, and I guess my secondary question is speaking with, say, second grade. I mean, if you look at, say, okay, eighty-eight percent last year, the total, you know, for this year is is forty-two percent. But out of the students who are virtually learning, which I assume they virtually learn every day of the week, is that correct?
No, sir. As far as us delivering equitable education, the hybrid students come in two days a week to receive a live face-to-face instruction. The virtual students, they lie, they they receive two days of live face-to-face instruction. So that they are receiving the same type of face-to-face instruction as the hybrid students. Now, on the days that they are not live, um, and the the teachers check in with them and after, from the afternoon after students dismiss every day. So from the time the students go home to the time the teachers get off work, they are on the computers, they're having their individual conversations with the parents to check on the students, how they are uh completing their assignments, how they have to submit an assignment or complete a task each day. That's that's part of our attendance power.
And I guess kind of driving my point of why I why I make that is that you have one system that is just that. It it's it's one system, like they're virtual and they get two days, but they're still just distance learning those other three days. And they're essentially all virtual. They don't have the same as the hybrid where they have three days where they're on the computer and they're learning or whatever their ver- their hybrid calls for, and then they have two days in the classroom. And so when I'm looking at the numbers there, I mean, some of them are similar, but that's just what I was curious about. Is do you see a a difference in where a child is being on the virtual platform versus a dual type of system of the hybrid platform as far as those students keeping up or or coming back faster as far as anything they may have had a slide. We all said summer slide, but you know, during this period of time. So that, I guess that's my question is, under those two types of structures, it appears to me, unless I'm just looking at the data wrong, that the virtual is producing higher. Then you might have less students virtual than you do have in the hybrid. Well, I mean, you, yeah, I mean, second, third grade, but I mean, the point is, I mean, you look at fourth grade, it's forty-one percent to forty and they're equal in fifth grade. So, I mean, I'm not trying to draw a distinction, I'm just trying to understand. Do you see one system that is panning out? That I would say panning out that, because I'm not trying to say one way wrong, one one's not, but in the data you're showing. And that is just math. Can we look at the reading as all as well and see how it compares?
To answer your question, um, Mr. Mr. Spears, there are, um, we have identified pros and cons to each um system. Now, majority of the students who are virtual, their parents committed to to virtual learning. They're committed to, you know, making sure that they have device, that they log on. And especially with elementary students, in order for them to keep up, they're going to have to have um some consistent parental involvement. Now, majority, majority of my uh virtual parents, which a large, very, very large percentage of them, those parents are on it, they're, you know, they're commu- they're constantly communicating with the teachers because if for some reason, if they're having a computer issue and they're getting ready to log on, the teachers know their their phones aren't ringing, they're going to text, or my office phone is going to ring. So the teachers, their their parents are on top of their lesson, their assignments. If something was submitted for, you know, grades that they're receiving. if something was submitted for, you know, the grades that they're receiving, so that they're receiving that, that immediate feedback, um.
Well, and, and not to interrupt you, but, but now, you know, if you look there, there's not as much variation between the two. And of course, there's not as much, it doesn't appear to be, I mean, certainly there is a drop-off as you would expect, but uh, but there's not as much of a drop-off compared to the, to the other, which math is more abstract than, you know, reading.
And my weakness last year, um, as I, although Cook moved from a kind of going to grade of an F to a D, the math proficiency from last year and the percentage of, of percentage of students who met growth last year, it was very low last year, you know, with me coming in. Uh, so math, math was, was a weakness for Cook last year as well, so, um, it's, it's, it's a process of growing, and um, there was, the, the data's showing there was quite a bit of, as we refer to it, code of slop in mathematics as opposed to reading. Now, we just completed our, we are completing, we'll finish this week. We are completing our benchmark assessment, and this is the benchmark assessment to where once we receive that data, we're gonna disaggregate that data, and that will give us more up-to-date data as to uh how much progress the students have made from August to now. And then we look at identify our strengths and weaknesses and address the next steps moving forward. We're doing that in ELA, math, excuse me, reading, writing, math. And the fifth graders are taking time, starting with our first grade students all the way up to our fifth grade students.
All right. Um, or do you have any other questions, just great presentation, any questions? Or do you have any questions?
I have one question. I would like to say, um, great job as a parent myself, but it, this has been, um, a number of times. And I'm trying to make sure that the students are on grade level. I wanna keep it all in mind coming through here, so, um, parents are having to put in the work as well as the staff, um. And it's just a tough time for everyone. And we're talking about the numbers, I think it's been a year, difficult, but it's a good time to, to really see what the cap um for the administrator, because it's, it's very early and it's just a different whole environment. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, I don't know, how are the students, the little ones doing emotionally? Uh, cause I know little ones, you have to hug them, encourage them a lot. Um, I wanted to know how they're doing, and what do you see them doing differently? Or do you see them doing them differently um in your building, um, in the way you're serving them, what's going on in the real world?
You know, um, little people, as I referred to, they are very resilient. Um, they are all excited to be back in school. Um, I, a, a, a lot of the reservations are from the grown people, the adults and so forth, and you know, but the students, they really don't understand, you know, necessarily the severity of it and so forth. And you know, last year we were able to high-five, we were able to hug and so forth. But the students learn very quickly. We still show them that love and affection. We don't do the hugs, we don't do the high-five, we do the elbow dance. We do some elbow dance, we do some high-five, we may do a little jig or something, gesture, or a wink, you know, a gesture or whatever. A wink and so forth to let them know, you know, hey, I see you and so forth. But, um, it's, it's, it's funny how sometimes I make a gig and I try to high-five and they say, uh-uh. You know, I stick the elbow out and, and but they are doing an awesome job. There, it's, it's not an issue as far as getting students in the building each day as we go through our safety checks, um. Parents are very, very cooperative, uh, they come in, they're, they're making sure that they're spaced out. And obviously, you know, every now and then, we have to remind them, hey, spread out, but it's, it's, it's not a major deal. And they truly understand why we can't share items like we did before, and just to put it to them in kid-friendly terms, we just wanna make sure everyone is safe. Um, and we are having age-appropriate conversations with them to, you know, let them know like why, why we do things. But, um, they're doing awesome, the, the students are doing awesome.
Uh, board members, do you have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have, uh, Mr. Lee Wells.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So our motto at SELL Elementary this year is teaching falcons to fly. We are at the five-twenty, we're passing forces our home address. And the reason why we've adopted teaching falcons to fly is because we believe that our job is to prepare them to leave the nest. Uh, in my experience at the high school, I know that that is the end result and that is where our goal is, uh, preparing them to leave, again, the, the nest, enter the workforce, the college and universities, or dysregret. Um, so our, starting with our building highlights, at the International Magnet School, uh, we have just, or just completing our celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, uh, which has been great. Uh, we have several Spanish-speaking students and staff members in our building, and um have been able to give them a taste literally of the, the Latin world and all that it has to offer. Um, we've transformed our lobby into a Latin museum. Uh, one of the walls there, you can't see in this picture, there is a map uh with all of the flags of the Spanish-speaking countries and showing where they're located. Um, the, one of my secretary, my bookkeeper, uh, is a Latin American. Um, and so she actually, in our recorded special classes, shared a little bit of her story and where she's from and, and whatnot. And having lived overseas myself, I also shared a little bit uh with my students about our story and our time in Chile, where we live there. Uh, also, in our school highlights, I have some, um, we're, we are a data-driven school. And you'll see here that this is bulletin board. Um, we are, for, it says for high-flying falcons, passing is not enough. Uh, because I believe, in my experience, that's all we talk about is passing the test, passing the test, passing the test. And passing is not enough. We have to get that, that mentality, that spirit, that we're striving for excellence, not just a pass. And so that's what we're working here. Um, math fluency is a huge goal of ours. Uh, during the interview process studying the data, um, I saw that math was low not only for SELL but across the board in our elevens. And so that is one of the big focuses that we have at SELL, working toward math fluency and celebrating it when we achieve it. So we've got some, some markers that we're trying to make sure that we achieve and do that. Attendance is an issue right now, um, especially with the COVID and, and our hybrid students and our virtual students doing the proper check-ins when they're not physically in the building. And so we have put some incentives in place to try to help boost that uh in the last couple of weeks and running some EBA reports weekly based on the homeroom, and have actually been seeing those numbers track up uh the last couple of weeks. Cause data tracking is extremely, extremely important for us. Um, our safety, we are continuing to do the, the five-question screener, the temperature checks. Of course, we have our safe slide, and our PPE is always uh a must in the building for all of our students and visitors and staff members. Um, our school culture, uh, I, I mentioned that we are teaching falcons to fly at the five-twenty. And for us, fly is an acronym. Fly means to follow the rules, to lead by example, and we always, always do your best. And we talk about that whether it's in the classroom, whether it's in the hallway, whether it's on the bus, whether it's at home, wherever we're at, we wanna be fly students, we're gonna be fly falcons. And so that's something that we ingrain in them, uh, or are trying to do so. Students can earn up to twenty-five fly bucks a week, that's what we call them. Um, ten are for behavior, ten are for their I read minutes and, um, passing those, those, um, lessons. And then they get five fly bucks a week also for attendance. And then they also, if they earn a positive office referral, they can get a bonus twenty-five fly bucks. And I have to say, I am getting much more positive office referrals than I have any kind of negative at, at all this, this semester. And that has been a, a great change uh for us. Um, looking at our blended learning and hybrid, um, these are the number of students in each category. I, I did break down the data into what my hybrid students are doing, what my virtual students are doing, and I read. I did not post that data, and I think this might help, uh, to respond to some of your earlier questions, because it is preliminary data. This is where we're at, starting. And to see if there is a difference, we'll have to look at our, um, our later data as we go into that fall diagnostic test. So then I'll be able to see, is there a difference in where they ended versus the difference where they started? Okay? I do have some of our beginning I read data I wanted to look at. This is the math and ELA, uh, super close, one on top of the other, just to kind of save, um, space. So at the top line on each one is our math score, and then the, the bottom line at each grade level is my ELA or reading score. Now, the thing that I want to draw emphasis to is the younger the grade, the more green, okay? And so my goal, or our goal at SELL Elementary, is to keep those grades at that level. Of course, we're gonna continue to do interventions, we're gonna continue to do tutorials for our older grades. But in the past, it seems like because our older grades are our tested grades, they're the ones that get the most focus. But if we'll focus on those early grades and build up, make sure that they're getting those essential building blocks, that when those kindergartners become fifth grader, we, our goal is to keep them at green all the way down, if that makes sense. Um, then the last thing I have is to look at some other data. This is our tier data, and so the blue represents tier one. All students begin as tier one students uh in the MTSS process. Our yellow, excuse me, orange is tier two. Tier two students are those students who just aren't quite getting tier one. So tier one means the basic instruction, the teachers are just teaching, okay? Or for, if it's behavior, I tell you the rules, and that's enough for you to follow the rules, okay? Uh, and so that orange is our tier two, the gray is tier three. Okay, so for gray, I'm getting more academically, I'm getting more interventions. Behaviorally, for both the, uh, tier two and tier three, uh, behaviorally, I may be given a, a behavior contract with special rewards if I can, you know, follow the rules, lead by example, and do your best, okay? Um, and then of course, I do have our student population listed there as well. Um, so that's the red. Of course, we always want our tier, uh, one should be about ninety percent of your school population. Um, nationally, tier two would be between five and seven percent, and tier three would normally be between three and five percent of your school population. Unfortunately, an ELA and math are tier two and tier three, especially it's higher than we would like. It's higher than the national average. Um, but we have identified those students, and we are meeting with them and giving them the interventions that they need to, uh, get them back into tier two or hopefully into tier one, um, education. Any questions, comments?
Or do you have any questions? Um, sir, I, I mean, I think the information stands for itself, and you know, I think it's looking strong, I like the enthusiasm in bringing something as far as that all the corner on that market, but it's like you got a competitive table. Next up.
Well, since you said so.
You start.
Okay, so. All right, my fall office, anything to say, my pets have stood for forty-eight hours. So you're not getting COVID from me. So you have my pets for everyone. Thank you very much. I'm gonna play this when you get home, I hope. I'm gonna make sure that I'm not the one that goes over this time. So we won't start counting until about five minutes in. Okay, so I'm in middle school, so I didn't know about the idea you wanted us to go over, uh, this portion now.
Just integrate it into, there's a lot of things that are.
Okay, so then I'll go straight into my presentation. Okay, I am the current principal, so from middle school, I'm a hunter with Ms. Martina Francois, and Mr. Dexter Peterson, and they are my assistant principals. Okay, middle school highlights. We call these middle school moments. At the end, I'm Miss Plastique, we're gonna go back to the hypothetical, and you're gonna start at seven thirty-three so I can answer Mr. Spears' question on how children feel like coming to school? Seven thirty-three. Okay, so. Happy Custodian Day, as you see my custodians, they are going, um, piecing in a little gift bag that they had. Um, they were sponsored and supplied by, um, the district office, and we thank you guys for thinking of us. Our middle school moms are excellent. We're very, very pleased to tell you guys that our seventh grade football team is undefeated. Ms. Penn is offering a virtual play of a family treasure, and it is a historical fiction play. We have that set sometime before, um, November the, before the Thanksgiving holidays. Mr. Barnardo, he has about three to five family members in his classroom, but they sound like a little symphony. I mean, oh my God, we have. Mr. Blake is in animation studio, he's working on something for me for Monday. I've been there doing an awesome job with the animation studio. Our health teachers, they're teaching fun, um, math fact fluency, to do our fluency, that's what our health department is doing. Our ICT teachers, they're gonna promote the vote. For ACT Valleys, we're gonna, uh, let all of our, uh, parents and students have a chance to vote in this upcoming, um, November election. However, at our school, we have informational tests, running the same activity with multiplication. And then they're going against literature and division, so we're gonna have a whole promote, promote the vote for, um, our candidates in November. Okay, so we have ACT prep that we are offering for our students on Wednesday. These were students who opted in, and I'm speaking with the parents, and they are joining ACT prep classes that we have on Wednesday. We had a very, very delightful meeting on Monday with Dr. Mabat. And what I wanted her to know is, even with students, sometimes they say, that you haven't known how much people care. And for the superintendent to carve out time just to meet with those ACT teachers, that meant the world to them, so we do appreciate that, everybody. What we've offered new this year is newsletters for all parents. That's pretty much on the elementary model, but we had so many parents to say, I don't know what my students are supposed to do while they're at, so to alleviate those questions. All of our teachers are posting each week a newsletter to our CMSD well page, to our CMS well page, excuse me. So that takes care of the what to do when they're out of school question. Our staff is our small group, that's one part of the reason why we're in school improvement. We are working with those teachers. Those teachers had to go back to the classroom to relearn the foundational skills of reading in order to close the gap. Sometimes we get so caught up into giving interventions that we reteach the standards. That's how we, some of our students need. They need us to close their foundational skills that they are missing. If teachers are not accustomed to teaching primary foundational skills, we have to send them back so that they can relearn what they need to close the gap. Because continuing to do the same thing, we won't be, the direct results, excuse me. So we are sending our teachers back under the, uh, Gardner Academy of foundational reading skills so that they can learn how to teach those, uh, six essential components of, of reading that is on our intervention model. The six components of reading will include finding some cognitive awareness, high frequency words, that's sometimes called sight words, the comprehension piece, which kills a lot of them, but it's killed a lot of them because of vocabulary. The comprehension is broken down into informational texts and literature texts. But if they cannot understand their vocabulary, no matter how good they are, if they cannot understand their vocabulary, they cannot comprehend their text, they cannot answer well on the assessment. So we're looking at all of those with our middle school halls. Okay, see you on that segment. Of course, like all the schools, uh, we do our temperature check every day. We were at the school that implemented the school entry survey. We run our metal detectors regularly. We conduct fire drills, we passed, uh, the chief of fire department to come to ensure that our drills are in accordance with the, uh, laws of the city, to make sure that we are in accordance with them. We conduct our tornado drills. We conduct our tornado drills, our lockdown drills. We have had to be in an actual lockdown this, uh, school year, we did have an unfortunate incident. However, everything was attended to as best as possible. We did learn from that incident, we know what we'll do differently going forward. We make sure that all of our doors are secure, we have plastic glass, glass, excuse me, on our front decks. We, uh, always wear our P P E equipment. We have seating charts behind every door for contact tracing. The students know not to change their seats, the teachers know not to change their seat. If there is a change of seat assignment, there is a new seating chart posted on the door, just in case for contact tracing. We have painter's tape marked every six feet on our wall so that if children, if they do forget, we can simply point to the tape, line yourself on the tape, no confrontation, they readjust and they keep walking. Our bathroom cave is located at the entry of every bus entry. So if there is a student that comes to school with a temperature, they go immediately into the bathroom cave. So we can see about that student, they do not have to travel down the hall, it is very discreet, and it goes straight into the bathroom cave. We did start the school year with two safe sites, however, we obviously that we need one. And we're very pleased the reason that we had to go down to one. One of them was in our gymnasium. We didn't know how long school would stay in session, so we put it in our gymnasium. Now our basketball team needs to practice, so that just marks how long we've been in school successfully. So we were happy to move out of that gym, so that our basketball team can practice. And our lunch procedure, as with every school, the lunches are provided on the weekend. So if you are a purpose student, you receive your lunch on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. If you are a goal student, you're receiving those lunch from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So, um, I read on the news, um, I heard on the news, excuse me, one day this week, a lot of students went hungry this summer because of school closing. Well, I'm very proud to be a workhorse in this middle school district because not only did we serve on the site, uh, Ms. Mia Johnson and her team went out to the neighbors to make sure that all students, so I was happy to say we were omitted from that list of, uh, students who could not receive, uh, their lunches. P P I S and culture, you have examples of those in your pages, so I won't elaborate on that, but, uh, we have afternoon hubs, and this is some, a turnout that we had to get people used to. Uh, our afternoon hub goes like this, so once all the students leave the campus, we call a hub when they're all six feet apart. And in that hub, we talk about what went well, what are our challenges now? The number one challenge that we had to make sure that we take every attendance, I mean, we're being transparent, and we just wanted to make sure we were finding the most creative way, uh, to make sure we were taking attendance, getting grades, doing everything, so we talk about a lot. I stay very informed with my staff through our afternoon hoes, because we have about three hoes a week. Um, we share, we have shared P O C time. Last year, I came before the board and I asked you all for a Saturday academies. I don't have to ask you for a Saturday academies now, because we have Wednesday's where we can do P O Cs, and it is working well. I mean, my teachers are growing leaps and bounds by having that day planned by having that day. Okay, so. I know. And we have safe sites, and I've already talked about that. So, blending learning and hybrid, um, the virtual model, it has, it has presented some challenges. First, you have to have the right people, the right seats on the bus. Uh, teachers that we started out with the virtual learning, we had to learn that we had overwhelmed them a little bit. The teachers, not even the students yet. And if the teachers are overwhelmed, how can they teach successfully? So I've talked to parents, stayed in constant contact with parents, we have had to make some adjustments in our teaching staff, uh, just listening to students and listening to parents. So, um, we have changed, made some adjustments to our virtual. Our hybrid learning, we had to make adjustments for that, we had to make adjustments as to the students do not change classes. The teachers change classes. And middle school students, they do need to exercise a little bit, so we are living with them stretching. But everyone wants to live and let live in the middle school, so the students don't have a problem following the C D C guidelines. And if they see a student with their mask down, they're probably something, hey, hey, get your mask off. And they go right on with it, so they're old enough to understand the difference between life and death. So they've had someone in their family, or they know someone else's family who has been directly impacted by COVID-nineteen, so we don't have a problem with trying to keep them, help them keep their masks on and things of that nature. Um, also, we have virtual pep rally, which we're going to, um, show at the end. Our virtual pep rally is, we have to have things to keep the morale up with our students, and we allow them to participate whether they're virtual, whether they're hybrid, we involve our teachers in it. And, uh, students always like when their teachers are a little goofy or whatever, so Mr. Peterson is on here, and he's doing a great little dance. So we, we do things to incorporate the virtual students back into the school so they can be a part of the school as well. And then we have six o'clock classes with some of our hybrid and our virtual teachers. They go over and be young, what's during the day, to make sure that the students are getting the material, whether they are hybrid or they are virtual, we have six o'clock classes, and we have several teachers who are hosting six o'clock classes virtually to ensure that the students aren't moving alone. Okay, our data. This is where it gets tough, all the other stuff is easy, easy, easy. Then, here's where it gets tough. At risk right now is sixth grade, uh, E L A, I have thirty-nine percent of my students now. This is at the beginning of the school year, and like Dr. you said, this is preliminary, this is with no instruction at all. I have thirty-nine percent of my students who are on tier three, twenty-three percent of my students who are on tier two, and thirty-eight. So, I read it's such a great program, they have instructional groupings. And in my instructional groupings, I see that forty-six of my students are low in the area of phonics. Phonics, and then it identifies the students for you, so that is a great, awesome way to get your small group instructions or your intervention started. So what you will notice, in all of my grade level, vocabulary is my weakest point in comprehension or reading. In E L A, it is vocabulary, so we'll talk about that when we get into your pages. In math, it is numbers and operations. And I've talked to Dr. LeVie, and I've talked to my staff, I have some sixth graders who are scoring on second grade level. That alarms me, right? So we had to open up the test and sit with the teachers to figure out, how can sixth graders be scoring on the second grade level? That should alarm a lot, but I'm gonna show you what happens in just a moment. Okay, it's the same, my data is fifty-nine percent is second, uh, in seventh grade at tier, uh, three, and fifty-three percent is in math. And you all can read the numbers, because I want to get to my activity to help you understand. This year at the, um, middle school, we've implement, implemented a literacy block. And we've now, we've been, we've, we're in the process of purchasing books and novels for our virtual students as well. But from eight-thirty to nine o'clock, we have what's called an intervention and literacy block where all of the school is shut down, and students are being read to, they are reading, they're going right next kitchen on on grade level books. And that is so important because that's when they hear the on grade level reading quietly all over the building. I'll tell you why that's important after a while. Okay, so we provide students with uninterrupted reading, writing, and then on the second day, after we receive that data, we needed to build in an intervention block. So on Mondays, it's the literacy block, Tuesday, it's intervention blocking, it's the same pattern for the Thursday, Friday. Okay, M T S S is my little intervention, as I said, we are in, um, a school of average, um, because of our sped population. Uh, E L, we don't have enough for a subgroup, however, we do have a total of seven, and this Brian, the E L coordinator, she comes in. Um, interventions for all, on, on Wednesday, we hold our interventions, we hold our interventions for our, um, virtual students. Um, and then we offer, as I've already said, then Tuesday and Thursday for any students who are to a low grade level. Okay, let's get in our packet really, really quick. Okay, so. As I told you, so this card, you all wanna read this card from here by yourself, it's a teacher card, and it's, it's a teacher handy, but there's some jokes in there and that all, teacher's side was hilarious. So make sure you get a chance to read those teacher jokes a little later. We have our counselor code, and, um, this is our counselor's newsletters, and never before have we had counselor newsletters to tell us what's going on on the whole building. So this is great, let's get down to why it's eighth grade E L A intervention lesson. This is a teacher who knows that vocabulary, yes ma'am? This is a teacher who knows that vocabulary is very, very challenging for students. So you will see two different packets, and in your two different packets, you will see that this is differentiated so that the learners, um, for those students who are starting and those students who are need on grade level. So not only are we targeting students who are below grade level, we are targeting all grade level vocabulary as well. Because as you see, or as you saw on the slide, all students, most of all of my students, if I have two hundred and nine, also all of them are struggling in vocabulary. So we have two different, um, vocabulary, and here, we're talking about the origin of the word, the root word, the meaning of it. I mean, it goes through, it's just awesome vocabulary work, and this is, this is the intervention piece. So I want you to understand, when we do intervention, it is very, very, very intentional. We have taken the time to study so that when we, when a student runs up on a text, they'll know what the prefix or the root word or the suffix means and how they change their word. Okay? And again, these are two different levels. This is what a teacher created in, in addition to what she did for her newsletter. She created this model because not everyone who does the E L A interventions are E L A teachers. To ensure that we're using that time wisely, the core teacher must provide a written script for the teachers, the other teachers who are conducting the intervention during that time, to make sure we're utilizing that time to its capacity. Alright, we're gonna go to the math. Interactive time, here, here we go. Are you smarter than a sixth grader? We're gonna see. We're about to see. Okay, so the first question says, which two expressions are equivalent to thirty plus forty-five? Everybody with me? Okay. What is the key word in this question? Yeah, alright, yeah, you are smarter than a sixth grader. Okay, it's equivalent, so what does the word equivalent mean? Equal, so that's already right there, reading this question in math, you had to know some English, correct? You had to know some E L A, you had to know something about words and how they work. So if my sixth grader could not pronounce that word equivalent, or they did not know what equivalent meant, could they answer this question? That's why we're gonna have to teach vocabulary and teach you way. Because then we have to say equal to right there. That's, oh, I can. So with that being said, go on really, really quickly and tell me which two are equivalent. Okay, we're gonna go over just for you, though. Alright, so here we go. Dr. LeVie asked us on Monday, what fluency do we need, and do we need it at every level? And it's not just about this, or it's not just about that. Fluency is gonna have to be your primary function in learning anything. So if you knew your multiplication fact, or if you knew to outside of parentheses, if you knew to multiply anything, there's some things you just have to know and wanted to know was equivalent, right? That's what we're having to slow down. So learning that multiplication fact and fluency can only help us go the next step. Alright, let's go down, let's get down to, um, the number one. What did you need to know about five point five? Well, no, looking at this question right here, what is your key word in this question? Opposite, but you had to know what opposite meant as it relates to the number one. Alright, who's got an answer, Dr. LeVie?
Oh, I didn't do that.
Okay, then, you will have somebody in that classroom that didn't do that one. Okay, so who's got an answer? Kim? Why is that the opposite?
One's the opposite.
Uh-huh. Because it's negative, it's the opposite of the positive, right? Okay, this is what the sixth graders have to know. And then they have to know this same thing that's on this, um, that back of the exit, that's just supposed to be one exit. Um, that one, don't, that mean tricky right there. Alright, so with that, now we're gonna take a play, a real quick little game, but you go through this, uh, math. No, let's go to one more question. These are the secondary questions that I was talking about, let's go to this really, really quickly. Go to this question number one, that's in that packet. Multi-step and numbers and operations. Okay, you would not do, you, 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 sir.
No, I, I think this is the trick question.
Uh-huh.
Because it doesn't say, did the customer person off the shelf can't draw?
Okay, yeah, this is what it says, there were eighteen cans on the shelf, a customer bought seven cans, then they put six cans on the shelf. How many cans are on the shelf now? Hmm? Eighteen minus seventy-fourteen?
I was just joking about, I didn't say about seven cans somewhere else.
Okay, so listen, there's your hand, fifteen, um, fish in this tank, seven were goldfish, the rest were neon taster fish. Then he had four neon taster, how many neon taster? What in this question is not needed? You are very good at it. Alright. Something. You will start adding odd numbers, and let me tell you why you're getting confused as a sixth grader, because you do not read. And you just see all the numbers, and you just go to add. So that's what we're having to do now, if C M S, let's slow down, and let's read, let's read everything. Alright, let's go to question number four really, really quickly. Question number four. Math has eight pennies, okay, this is what we can't do. We can't read the question aloud to the students, that's what the teachers were doing at first. We banned that, they must try independently. Right, Dr. Schum, they must try independently, because if I can hear it, I can do it, but can't, they hear it on the test. No, they can't hear it on the test. Somebody did say you let it. And it missed a secondary question. So when I look at my data, my children know how to compute this, they did not read this. So that's what we're having to turn around. We can make ourselves look lower functioning than we are with data if you don't understand how to fix your data. Okay, so with that being said, we're gonna take a quick little test. Everybody turn on. Yeah, real quick, turn on your device, it saves power. We're gonna do the level one, so we're gonna keep it at level one, so we're gonna hit enter. Get started, I get people to start, go. Get started, I get people to start, go. I'm done, I won. Yeah, well, it could be a contest in your classroom or back room.
I think you gave me more questions.
That's what you think, it's not exactly, it's not exactly.
Fifty-four seconds.
Fifty-four seconds, I have fifty. But you keep, keep going, you'll build your fluency up. So this is how, this is one way that we're doing math fluency as a competition, because everyone wants to beat each other. And you can build it with the vision as well. Alright, so then we have our, uh, STEM scope award, to say that we had STEM scope award for two, uh, weeks in a row. We're teaching everything. STEM scope is our science award, we're doing STEM scope. It's our science award that is given out every week by, um, Karen, that's our, uh, Karen White, that's our, uh, science curriculum. Alright, so then we have our promoting vote, everything period is about how students need to engage in voting. Because there are a lot of things that the adults learn with the voting, and this is a lot of great vocabulary. And when you turn on your news every day, what are they talking about every day? The election. And here, we're going to, and this goes apart with our social and emotional, we're gonna give the kids the, uh, cap, the, uh, mats every day. I mean, the mats that I live in, they're not coloring in, or darkening in their red and blue space to see if they can help determine the, the electoral college. So, that's what's going on at Columbus Middle School. A lot of learning all across the spectrum, we're taking care of the social and emotional, we're taking care of the math, we're taking care of the E L A vocabulary, we're looking at our data. We are building our enrichment through other programs, um, we're all there. Any questions, and Mr. J C, I see that you are up, so listen, you got? You don't have access to it?
Yes.
Okay. I got an email that said I shared it with you, okay. Alright, well, it was our cheerleaders finishing up their prayer, and they were saying, I'm so glad that I go to see you, ma'am. So, yeah, it was really, really cute, so that's how our students feel about coming to see you, ma'am. Any questions for me?
Any, any questions for us, I think it's great presentation and, uh, that's all pretty awesome. We should be tested today, guys, over there.
And you can keep these in and practice on them.
Uh-oh, she's gonna come back and make the finish, level fourteen or something like that. Thank you very much.
You're so welcome, thank you.
Alright, uh, next we have, uh, Mr. Craig Chapman, welcome. Uh, now we've got more tests, right?
Oh, no, no test. No test at all. Good afternoon to, uh, to board of the states, uh, Dr. LeVine and everyone else. I am Craig Chapman, president of Columbus High School. We have, as part of our administrative team, we have, um, Ms. Brenda Disby. We also have Mr. Trotter, who's a new administrator, as well as Gary, who was our athletic director. We also have a lead teacher, this Monta Yung, who has been doing a great job with, um, supporting our students. And so last year, we started with Team Two Fifteen, and we'll continue with our Team Two Fifteen. This year, we want to, uh, we're, we're, we're coming in as one team, one mission. We want everyone to understand that our mission is to make sure that our students are prepared for, uh, like after school, make sure their career, college ready, as well as listening. So just looking at some of the school highlights, um, this year, we started with our, uh, student ambassadors, which is something that we want to, want to continue with, uh, building, we want to continue building in our school. Uh, and we, so we had recommendations for, uh, for students to put on this team. Now, we, we started looking at students we knew, um, we wanted to bring, given opportunity for them to bring something to the team. So a lot of the students who are on this team, they actually bring something different, or they're, they had a different approach to Columbus High School. Of course, we have Zion Johnson, who is on the, this is the Department of Education Student Committee. We also have Ms. Amber Jones this year, um, she's a very quiet young lady, very shy, but giving her an opportunity to be a part of something is something that we probably would never expect, but she's very excited about bringing on this. We also have Ebony Quon, that's who, she's a full-time building enrollment student. And we want students to understand that having, being a full-time building enrollment student is possible at Columbus High School. The only courses she takes at Columbus High School is children, uh, we also have Makaya, uh, what's her name, who was recommended by her, uh, coach. Because she's all about basketball, she knows the game, but she doesn't realize that there's life outside of basketball, so giving her an opportunity to be a part of something that's not related to basketball or something else, one reason why we want her on this, um, this committee. Uh, moving on to some of the other images, we had the world teacher celebration day, uh, which was last Monday, where we just went around with snacks for our teachers, giving them an opportunity to let them know we thank them for, for everything that they're doing and just showing our appreciation. And we also celebrated our five, five-day state championships, uh, ladies, ladies championship team, we never had an opportunity to do COVID, so this was an opportunity for, uh, for them to be recognized. We had the ring ceremony at this time, so this was just a great opportunity for the girls to come back and be recognized for their state championship. We also went into the, um, another school highlight is are you voting, which is something that our students really, really, um, took advantage of trying to encourage their classmates and people in the community to vote. We had approximately seventy-five, uh, students to vote from the high school, or without having to register. Of course, we did have to work with some more, actually, for them to have the application, but they were excited about it. And as we share with, uh, some of the media that our students are aware, they are aware of what's going on in the world, they want to be a part of this, so we, we had a lot of students to come out and vote. Um, Zion Johnson did a video to promote just the, uh, history of voting. Uh, we also had Jacob Van Naug, who shared by, it was very important to vote, it was a very powerful video. Uh, we, we haven't had a chance to see if we did, posted to our Facebook page, I think there was a video here, but I'll probably have to pull up. And we also had students to, to be a part of our, be a part of a time hobby with the, um, African African fraternity, which, um, consisted of representatives of Kareem, as well as, um, district attorney, uh, Dr. Cologne. So we had students participate in that and they did well. So we are very proud of them and we're looking forward to the next session, which is getting them out to vote. Uh, which is also what is gonna be our follow-up, to just see how many students we have to take out to vote. Uh, we've had, um, uh, district attorneys back home to let us know that he wanted to give the teachers to make sure that they knew, to encourage them to go out and vote. So that's something that we want all of our students to, to understand, that voting is very important. So I think with this opportunity where things are going in the world, it really got a lot of our students attention. So we think it's a play during the summertime, we saw a lot of our Columbus High School students out, uh, going to protest, just being a part of this, so we're very excited about it. Now, as far as our, uh, who's C H S safety, uh, the C H S safety, which is, uh, pretty much everything that Dr. that Ms., uh, Gardner just went through. Uh, but one thing that we have to do, we do daily metal detecting checks, instead of, uh, periodically, we have not too much of our customers to do daily metal detecting checks. Which is actually, uh, something that we're, we're, we're very, very happy to be able to do now, and our students are, they do feel safe with this. Uh, and, and we want to continue with making sure that we can do our daily, uh, metal detecting checks. Of course, we still do the daily technical checks, as well as having our P P D. Uh, our safe site, we have the map and S, now with the high school, it's very difficult with the safe site. With high school students, they do not want to come to school if they don't have to be in the building. But, um, we had to have some tough conversations this past week with some of our, um, parents about why was supportive of them to be in the safe site. Uh, we had sent out some information to let them know that being a part of the safe site can actually support their child with, um, with their academics and their attendance. And so by having a contract or a safe site, which is, uh, the map and S, we're receiving more phone calls now about making sure that it's open, because then I get an opportunity to do, to not do it at homes or being counted absent. So now, you know, we're, we're having parents to say, I want to come, I want them to be there. It's now, this is up, they didn't do well, so what can I do to support my child? Um, of course, we still have the same, uh, as far as procedures, as far as the safe room, which we do have two in our building. Um, we also use as far as, um, nurses who are in that building, we use the nurses from showers, as well as, we have, so we're actually very pleased and have been blessed with our safe rooms, uh, for our students, when they come in, they may have attended to all of the adults. So now the, um, important information is, uh, moving into our culture and P B I S. Uh, we have a staff shout-out room, uh, again, we celebrate the world teacher celebration, the snow evening celebration day, our teacher incentive, which is, uh, we try to do weekly of wanting for purpose attendance, and that, we, we've seen an improvement with teachers, uh, making sure they're, uh, at work and make sure at their own times, because of the incentive that's been, um, now. Uh, the teacher of the month, we actually had a opportunity to celebrate our teacher of the month, along with celebrating our teachers by having, uh, Conny Ice come by and give our snow cones, uh, to our teachers, as, um, um, pizza for them, to celebrate and give them, uh, opportunities to let them know that we do appreciate everything they do. Uh, we had our P B I S kickoff at the beginning of the year, uh, our children in the hallway, uh, drawing lines to celebrate, we also have this virtual or lives or our virtual, we also have a virtual, um, assembly coming up tomorrow, which will be, uh, live on our Facebook that we made to, to see as well. Now, as far as our, uh, P B I S kickoff, we're trying to celebrate academics, making sure that the academics, and to make sure students are doing well. Uh, attendance incentive, which is like I said, the high school is one of our toughest areas, getting high students to be a part of it every day, so with our virtual and hybrid student, virtual students continue to do well, but hybrid students on their opposite days, high school students don't want to be a part of it. Again, with the letter that we had to send out this past week, letting parents know that, you know, it's a chance that your child may not meet graduation requirements, or your child may be removed from course because they, you know, they're not attending. Uh, it woke a lot of parents up, and so now my home this past week has been ringing off the hook of what can I do to make sure my child is not the fool, or make sure that they can stay in those courses or even graduate on time. And that's something that we want to do, we're, we are going to work with them, we did as a note, we can support them, we can support as well. Um, and one thing that we've had to look at is, when we're looking at virtual students, sometimes parents, when they first started, they thought maybe this was the best option for them. So now we're having to look at, you know, is it a good, uh, should we bring them back? Is it a good time to bring them back? Uh, will they do that, will they perform better if we bring them back? So that's something that our administrative team had to really look at and think about, because if they are not doing well, like, we had to make some tough decisions to schedule times for those students to be phased back in the building. Because again, we do not want any students to fail, as I explained to my teachers, you know, one, the hardest part for me is to leave the child out and not give them the best, give, put them in the best situation where they can graduate. So we've had to make some decisions of basing some of our students back in the building, so they can get that instruction. One thing that we've seen with bringing students back is that it's slightly about being back in the building. Uh, they are following procedures, following protocol, that we've asked them to follow. Uh, in our building, we do our students transition, so we have tape in the hallways, to make sure that students are walking on the right side of the hallway, and we, again, we have very, been definitely blessed with, um, not having to do destruction, being able to focus on academics and the instruction. So it has been, uh, we've actually done a lot of great stuff. So the behavior, of course, with continuous behavior, uh, our P B I S team, as well as our, um, our risk counselor has done a great job of identifying those students from last year to make sure that we are putting them in a situation where this year they will have a better opportunity to not be distracted by all of these things that they're checking for performance, so that has actually been great for us. Now to the academic part of it. Now, we took the pre-test, uh, at the beginning of the year, uh, for our subjects here, and eighty-four percent of our E L A students, twenty-two out of twenty-six actually were able to take the test, or we do give those benchmarks, we do have students come back in, so when you see some parts of it, uh, the numbers are going to be, um, some of them will be high, some of them will be low, not twenty-two out. Uh, now eighty-two percent of our E L A students passed or they did well on pre-test, seventy-three percent scored proficient or advanced, thirty-two percent advanced. And so, uh, with our E L A, fifty-nine percent were below grade level, fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent. Twenty-five percent was one level or below, and I read, I read the data, uh, sixteen percent on or above grade level. Now, as far as algebra, uh, forty-nine, forty-two percent, um, twenty-nine of fifty-nine took the test. We got a very small class, and when you come to E L A and algebra, because students, these were taken the first time, you don't have as many students staying there the first time. We have new home forces with, with in the E L A, because they take credit right in the beginning of the year, and then they're placed into English two, English ten, that second semester. The ones who are placed in English ten, first semester, are ones that we've had to work with and pull them out of the English standpoint, to give them some extra support, or the accelerators who are moving forward, so, um. Those numbers are good for E L A, right, that's worth eighty-four percent, we do want to increase that. We are gonna have another assessment, a comprehensive assessment, uh, at the end of October, to make sure that we can get that one hundred percent participation for them. As far as algebra, we had twenty-nine percent out of fifty-nine, uh, those numbers were low, again, we do have a small percentage of students who were taken in algebra. And the hardest part was getting them in, getting some of the students back in the building, but we devised a plan now where we're able to test those students, um, virtually or at home, so we're, feel like we were able to get more participation from those students, but we'll see what those numbers are gonna look like the next couple of weeks. When will we give them another comprehensive assessment to make sure that they understand we have, uh, standards? Now, our U S history, we have, um, did not have a pre-test data for them, but we do have the highest percentage of student participation rate. They were able to take a benchmark yesterday and had, um, over seventy percent of participation from those students, so again, we are going to have another benchmark for those students as well, because we want to make sure that when we are working with them, that we understand where they are, so we'll know how to move them forward. Uh, likewise with biology, we had seventy-eight out of one hundred and thirty-four, that's not a good number, we're not having that number. And again, this, well, the biology students, all the majority, the, um, ten grades, ten places, like ten grades, we had fifty-eight percent to actually participate in this test. Uh, sixty-eight percent passed, forty-three percent of the ones that took more, proficient or advanced, one point three percent was advanced. And so what we're doing is, again, working with this, um, this garden sale with Ms. White, as far as, uh, the curriculum coach, doing some of the work with STEM scope, make sure that we're bringing that in for our students, because it gives that rigor, uh, to those teachers and for those students, so we are, uh, providing plans, we're getting these students in so they can complete the assessments. Again, after this first nine weeks, we did see an increase of students wanting to come back, be a part of it, so we're hoping that with these next few weeks, we can see that, um, we can see that that has changed. We'll have better data for knowing who's in our building or excuse being able to take the test. Uh, we devised a plan, so we can test them at home, from their previous, we're able to see what they're doing, because this, we wanted them to come in the building, but now we're, uh, able to test them from their site, and, uh, we count that data for you. Now, with A C T work keys, I think this year, we've done a great job with pushing A C T work keys. Uh, we're in partnership right now, trying to see with Community University, I was hoping Dr. Taylor, the executive director of Community University, and we're scheduling an intensive visit to Community University, uh, Community University, December fourth. Uh, we have an assessment coming up in December, December seventh and eighth, we want to make sure that our students have a plan, and they have some, have a reason for doing well in this test. We, uh, want eighty-five percent of our students to score zero or above, so actually giving them that opportunity to see what's being offered, what's offered at Community University, will encourage them to go in the test and do well. Uh, we have weekly virtual work keys and co-teaching meetings, um, on Wednesday, set aside where a lot of the students come in and they have, we have all of our teachers, whether it's E L A twelve, or our work keys course, or our lead teacher, or the curriculum coach for math, they're all teaching at the same time, so students are able to just join the entire big group and to see that, do that instruction, so we feel like we've done a great job with A C T work keys, we're being, uh, intentional about what we want to do, and to help our students with the different, uh, careers that's possible for them. With A C T prep, we, our A C T death around nineteen, uh, twenty, we did move up, four point eight to fifteen point six, the state average is seventeen point eight. Uh, we have C H S go with a positive score of eighteen, uh, going into this year, we want to make sure that we can, uh, encourage our students to get them to vote, what it takes for them to get that eighteen. Uh, the A C T focus groups, uh, we try to do the A C T breakfast, which exposes them to the A C T language, uh, A C T lunch. There are also teachers, because the teachers are making sure that they give out those, um, that A C T information, so they understand what it looks like, how to approach them in question, and be able to look at the difference between what's required in math assessment and what's required in A C T assessment. Uh, we are also committing to E L A and, um, A C T and E L A eleven, algebra to chemistry. And we have a college that we read this curriculum that's, uh, supported by the A C T program, we do the program with A C T jumpstart, um, in our A C T courses. So what are we gonna do for English nine, uh, or E L A two? Again, we have comprehensive assessment coming up, November the seventh, we see, uh, we're doing comortal teaching and our virtual teaching model, which is where we are dividing our students into different pods, uh, we have Uh, we have teachers who are stronger with virtual students. They're taking on the responsibility to teach the virtual students. Sometimes it's very difficult at the high school to, if I have to pause like that because, you know, you have students that are taking so many different courses. But we're looking at some of our test area courses and making those decisions to create those pods where we're putting students who are, are teachers which in the areas where they're stronger. Uh, so our English teacher, some of the, the stronger teachers, we have a stronger teacher for virtual, we have a stronger teacher for hybrid. So we're going to make those changes. Uh, we're hoping that's going to support those students to get them better instruction. Monitor and re-entry virtual student. Again, those students who have parents who have a difficult time at home, we give them the data and making sure that they have those. Give them a little caution that they need to come back. We're trying to support them on their return. We'll make sure they follow all procedures and protocols that we have in place when we continue to say. Uh, a little boot camp students prior to the assessments. Uh, for algebra one, we also have a comprehensive assessment coming up November seventh and sixth. Uh, to increase the IREDA usage. Uh, co-teaching models was the coaching and the monitor of re-entry virtual students. For our US history, we are, um, looking into an impact consultant to make sure that, because when we had the impact consultants, um, previous year, our US history actually did much better. And so we may have to go, have to go back to look down at that coaching as opposed to the one that we used in previous year. Because we did not have as much, um, support as we needed or we wanted that much of a total. Now, uh, with biology, again, we're going to increase our STEM, STEM scope usage, our virtual teaching model, the coaching. Uh, as well as monitor virtual re-entry students on that model and turn that those students back in. Right, in TSS subgroups, virtual students, we have, we're having a fifty-two students who are virtual. We have five hundred and ninety-nine hybrid students divided into A and B days, early and middle days. Uh, ELA students, we have, uh, approximately ten. I consider ten because we're kind of down between eight, nine, and ten in that number. Because we do have, um, um, the enrollment goes up one day, come in, and then they leave out. So for the last few months, it's been between eight, one, and ten. Um, four students identified as twice exceptional. Uh, we provide opportunities for those for our sixty-six students as well as athletic. Uh, we can study students or we provide opportunities for them. Uh, special population, self-encouraged students have the option of attending school four days a week, fed teachers co-teach. Subъектив teachers support fed population, uh, at risk center, um, we've identified the older population. We started, wanted to start our year with blended learning academy, uh, which we can call the Alvin Academy for COVID when everybody's blended learning. And so, uh, but we're still working with the older population and those students who are two or more years behind on the core. To put them in place for every success or aid graduating with their homework, uh, and happy mind. So I blended learning, uh, and we use the jumpstart, personal lines, edginess teams. Um, edginess is basically our program that we're definitely using now, um, because it is support with students in current grade or the ones who are, uh, using creative recovery. Uh, video promotion is the commercial for students, students announcement post, and the relation. So this is, um, right now what's going on at Columbus High School.
Uh, board members, do you have any questions? Is, don't you ask?
This is just for clarification and also a chance to show my ignorance. Um, you were talking about testing participation, your first line on academic data. Is that not required?
It is required.
Okay.
Yes, it is required.
They just opted not to do it.
And you know, um, we went back today, we actually had a discussion this morning about the numbers we had, uh, because we did benchmark, benchmark this week as well. And we started looking at our numbers and we noticed that there was an increase in the number of students with benchmarking as opposed to pre-test. And we identified a number of students who were not completing assignments, but they showed up to do a benchmark. Uh, so we had conversations that, you know, we're getting the information, the teacher are contacting you. Trying to support you, but you choose this, this choose life to do. Um, and you know, and I mean, I think with the letter, the attendance letter that was there, uh, that also was sparking, okay, now I need to come back because I may not graduate. Uh, I'm forgetting this letter. My parents called, my parents called, trying to, why are you taking my child? Well, you know, if you're getting called without attendance, this is not happening. You know, this is, it's hard for us to do it, but this is just where we are for our new students to participate. So again, as we looked at yesterday, this was the benchmark that had the last two days, uh, we had an increase that was larger than just this from the pre-test. I think it was part of, it's a lot, it had a lot to do with the letters that were sent out. And, um, understanding that they may be in difficulty of not graduating or being removed from a state test area. Which will call them to have to take it another year, which is the end of the year.
Thank you. Keep up the, the work on that.
Absolutely. The only question I have is, you know, when you're doing your numbers of virtual versus hybrid, there were eight hundred to nine hundred students enrolled. Is that an adequate count? Or you say that there were students that didn't return to either platform from the previous year?
Yes, sir. That, um, that is correct. We, I don't know if I think about it, did you know that? Um, um, last year, but we're seeing an increase. Uh, spoke with, we went to register yesterday and she said the numbers changed every other day because I'm growing more students. Uh, we did have a number of students who would go to a different district because that, you know, they had a different platform that the parent was, uh, wanted their child to be on. But I think a lot of them are coming back now. So right now, we are ranging between nine thirty-five and nine fifty. Uh, based on, speaking of yesterday, she's saying, no, the amounts are changing, they're changing with the more students in. We're finding students, um, who we lost or giving back. So that, that is possible. So I think, um, as they, I know it's hard for not just my teachers, administrators, but, you know, I, so I turned up about, I think we worked harder during this COVID season by, um, contacting and calling and trying to find students more than anything. Uh, so again, the data that I was showing is not just a Columbus High School statistic. This is pretty much worldwide because a lot of schools are faced with finding high school students. And I think this is why a lot of the high schools, a lot of the districts are going back to traditional. Because they're able to, um, I, I always say, just put your hands on, just there to say, here you are, I got you, I can help you. And so that's kind of what I'm faced with, um, is, um, it's always a struggle trying to make sure that you're here. Taking, you know, getting what you need because you have to react to it. That's not the truth.
Any other question?
Uh, a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Chapman, thank you. Um, do any of the students or parents ever say the reason why they're not, um, participating or had or did not return? Um, is it because their family dynamic, dynamic change or?
Yeah, not, I receive those, um.
Family issues?
Yes, ma'am. That is, no, ma'am, we haven't. I haven't yet.
Actually, you know, they, they did the problem throughout the state, um, some of the students from March to May that didn't participate or didn't, didn't play well, uh, that, um, did not register, obviously, actually from my college throughout the state. I think we're doing a good, good, careful, a lot of the long-term students did, uh, other, other options. And so, um, we're just not wrong in dealing with, um, not only the attendance issue, I guess that very level, um, the pressure of that, but also, um, just, just the lost students didn't. But with those that I had planned, so my dad said to me too, you know, we had something happen, he worked on the park, he was just there proper. Something happened, you know, my uncle had to stay home, help my, my grandpa or my aunt at age, because they just didn't want that school. And so we kind of talked about it with super since we're out of state and we pray that we can get that, that lost kid that did not come to March to May. Maybe a household thing where, I mean, we can say, oh, keep the kid.
Like, that's what I was getting, because it's the same down in the state.
Yeah, eventually, because that, especially in Delta, there's been huge problems. So as kids are triple A and U seven, keep the best they can, keep those students. But I would say that, that from the super since it goes to the government level, there will be this kind of lost population of kids. And then, then they kind of dropped off the face of the earth in March to May, and I'm sure they'll back in. Um, and I think what Mr. uh, Chapman said is true. I think because we say the constant communication and we take the beat of it. Uh, because our role again is, is, is finding them to, for us to stay. And that I think, uh, we can, we can, uh, just send in and getting kind of, I mean, us getting the beat of students that will help to stay in some kind of connection with our, our community.
So I guess to answer your question, yes, we have had those, um, those conversations and those conversations with, um, coaches and, uh, you know, I can do the work, uh, you know, hours to work. And we've had to go and talk and talk with them just about, you know, why isn't that work? And this, um, yeah, that, that has been a struggle, I think, because I can give more hours to work now. But I choose, that you need to do, um, that you do work and support the family. And one little part about, you know, Columbus High School, even some of them going back traditionally to that, you know, as we say, you know, like those systems, those families where the older child may be supported, you know, the younger child. So, you know, those are just some, um, some of the things that we are, we really have to consider when we, you know, think about a plan of what we want to do. Um, but definitely with, um, those that means some students are able to work and have the more hours and whatever we got, like, yeah.
And, yeah, I'd like to check here, 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 uh, these station numbers to be, that's, uh, we just want to be honest with you all that we're all careful of the problem, all of the things that can, you know, people may be wrong about when we are working with, you know, the, the, the.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapman. Very pleased to be here.
Yeah, just one other thing. I wanted to congratulate the, um, ambassadors. They did a fantastic job at the Union Academy. Uh, they did presentation event and Dr. Brown, you were the main.
That's right.
Thank you. I know, they have it too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Bray.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, just got a few things to talk about today. Uh, since we do serve a lot of, well, the same students as a high school, there is some overlap in what we, um, what we, um, what we do, but, um, we're going to, we do some unique things in our building also. So just a few highlights of what's going on currently. Uh, this year, we're currently serving both hybrid and virtual two hundred and forty-three students. Um, and this month, two things we want to highlight is we're doing an attendance incentive, um, and a national red ribbon week competition. Uh, so students who are perfect attendance have an opportunity to win gift cards. Uh, they're going to be put in a draw. We know that October is the big month for attendance. And we want to, uh, encourage all students to either, and this, this is not just for hybrid students, this is also for virtual students logging in, um, during those class periods. And then the students are going to have a, a door decorated contest. It's local. And it also is going to be submitted to the national competition, um, through the red ribbon week at the end of the month. Our safety is pretty much the same as all the schools. Uh, no student enters our building directly. They all go through the high school first. So they're going through temperature checks and metal detectors and all that at that building before they come to our floor. Uh, and as a continuation in our building, of course, there's, we wear masks, social distancing, dish shields, sanitizing, disinfecting. Uh, our teachers, even though, um, their temperatures just checked when they enter the building, each block are checked. Uh, and it's checked ten minutes before, we still check it at our door, um, before they enter, um, our classrooms. Culture of PBIS, uh, even in these unprecedented times, teachers and students continue to find a place, uh, within our, our killer family. Just that we thrive in being as a family and supporting students, uh, throughout their entire life. Um, we do participate in the PBIS program at the high school, which Chapman did, or specifics, we take, uh, our teachers serving communities called FLY. And that's where students are encouraged to follow the rules, lead by example, and to do your best. Uh, so we support that, uh, there, in our building because it's the same students and we want to make sure it's, um, it's the same applies and, and across the board for the students. Uh, in our building, we have a student of the month. We recognize those students. Each month, they are posted in our, um, lobby area. They're doing a little snack and a letter is sent home to their parents. Uh, we still, what a great job they're doing and, um, we want to make sure that the parents know that their child has been recognized. Uh, uh, Ms. Billishman's daughter was recognized in one of our classes, uh, this, this month. So she, she thanked us for doing that and said, you know, said her daughter uh, really is enjoying the class and taking that time to, to recognize those students. Um, and then, like I said, uh, we'll, we'll be doing the, um, the incentive for, um, attendance this month also. So blended in, uh, hybrid, virtual learning, um, both hybrid and virtual students are enrolled in our programs. Uh, we have to allow students, even though they're completely virtual, to be a part of our program. Uh, in doing that, we also have to meet, um, students accommodations, um, through, if they have a IDP. So those are maintained both in classroom and virtually. Uh, we have, uh, my student service coordinator who will actually read a test virtually to a student at home over the computer. Um, so we're having to make those type of adjustments this year to meet those accommodations. Virtual students and teachers also set up appointments for, to fulfill face-to-face lab assignments. Some of our, some of our classes, we really have to have that hands-on, face-to-face, um, interaction. So, um, there have been multiple students in our health science class that have come to be checked off. Uh, you can't charge a check off on blood pressure or breathing or making a bed from your house. So we set up and they come during, uh, fourth block or on Wednesdays and, and do those check offs. Uh, we've also even, uh, given students supply packs to complete lab, lab assignments. Uh, in engineering, they had to build a catapult, which is basically popsicle stick rubber bands, cardboard. Um, we even supplied those students with those materials. They could come pick up a packet, take it home and produce the product, or with the catapult in that case, and submit it, you know, submit it online with, with what they had created. So we're making sure the students still have access to what they need. Um, that part mostly had a glue moon. So we've also did our glue moons, you know, and that went home. So they get to do it. Because everybody doesn't have access to that. So we're still trying to make sure that's happening for all those students, um, that are virtual. So we don't have just data like everyone else. Um, so I grew this at any data testing and findings. This year, we did not have any, um, pre-test. Some years we do through, just through the R C M and the state department for our programs that were not being this year. Uh, one thing I did want to highlight from actually last year, we did not have our end-of-year testing, but we did have a pre-test earlier in the year. Our culinary arts students made a hundred percent pass rate for the service-based national certification. We were proud for that and all our students did a great job with that. Um, and that program is actually moving to that national certification this year. So all students will be doing that. Um, so our teachers are still preparing for the CPAS and national certs in April. Previously, we had two programs that had national certifications and that was culinary arts and carpentry, which is the, um, NCC Arts National Carpentry, um, program. This year, um, the state is moving and I had, as they've been wanting to, and as I have promoted for multiple years, we're moving to, and I've talked a lot about, national certifications, you know. Taking a CPAS test really means nothing to anybody, but if you can get them a national certification. So this year, they are moving forward and adding four programs that we have, network technology, we're taking a national cert test. Automotive circus, collision repair, and early childhood will all add to that. So we'll have six programs. The students can have, leave, leave our building with a national certification, uh, that's recognized. Um, our CTE audit findings that was, been two years ago, that documentation has been submitted. I have reached out to them to find out about our letter of, uh, release. Uh, there are two other groups that are almost signing with us, are waiting for their letters. Uh, hopefully that will get sent to us very soon. Ironically, although we are in school, M D E and C T E are working remote, um, so it's a little more of a challenge. I know. I mean, you can't call them, you have to email them, and then you're on their, you know, their terms. So I have reached out to hopefully get some information on, on moving on with that. Uh, as I said, those indicators have been bad and we're just waiting on them to go loose on that. Um, yeah, we, I think across the state, most educators in life, we're all here and, we're all. But, um, hopefully that, that will be cleared up, um, soon enough. Uh, part of that has to do with some personnel changes they've had, uh, at, in that office. MTSS and subgroup interventions, we work in conjunction with the MTSS team at CHS to make those names, you don't have a separate group, proposal services, like students. I think teachers do, uh, provide input to the student behavioral needs through that process, uh, and we support student behavioral incentives. One thing we're working on right now, a student that met multiple times, uh, he is an auto killer student, but, and had some discipline problems last year. But he, it has been recognized that he's very interested in automotive service, working on cars, as he says. So we have set up a behavioral incentive plan for MTSS, but it will start, actually should start tomorrow. Uh, and if he does well in his academic classes, the following week, he'll get thirty minutes to come to my automotive teacher and be in the shop, one-on-one, um, and kind of introduce him to that. With the idea that that gives an incentive to stay out of trouble, uh, to not have that long list of referrals. Uh, and the next year, he's a tenth grader, so he would, uh, easily be able to apply to our program, um, and hopefully be a completed advisor for a great year. Uh, so that's something new for us a little bit, but the, the teacher's on board and we feel like it's gonna hopefully be successful this year. And that's correct.
Questions? Well, remember, if you have any questions, I think, like, did you see the six programs that have been added to that, or which were they? Right, uh, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have, uh, Ms. Garrett, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, CSA, that's where we are. And inside of all of our, um, details, especially with my label, it's a little different, but that's a fact of the matter. Uh, our two highlights, of course, all we know, we have that four thousand nine minute time on our tool, so we are very excited about our one hundred and fifty-five year celebration party. And, um, our theme, our motto, as you, as you would for fifty years, is some of the best activities are proclaiming to be a school of hope, having all the positive expectations, as you guys know, we've already been on a country school, so, um, we, my teachers, my, um, councilor, and myself, we are all improving positively in this year, because we want them to be special at their homeschools as well as when they're with us. Again, we have just celebrated, as you all were present for, our one hundred and fifty-five years in Union Academy, um, one hundred and fifty-five years of excellence in education. That brings us to safety, every day our students' temperatures are checked when they get off the bus and or out of the car. Uh, we also, um, have desk shields, and we do have masks readily, readily available for students if they do not have one. We have a questionnaire for our visitors, it's a QR code that they sign, um, regardless of if they're, um, staff members from C M S D or from a visitor or vendor off the street. Um, they do actually sign in, we ask those COVID questions, and if they're in positive answers, they can actually go, so we're keeping everything very, very safe, um, in our building. In the classroom, we have our desk, we depart, we do hand washing before lunch, breakfast, now, CSA, we do not change classrooms, I do have, um, elementary, well, my class, my elementary kids last day was yesterday, I have elementary, middle, and high, so once they get there, the classroom that they're in, that is where they stay. And our teachers actually rotate classrooms, so when it comes to lunch and breakfast, they are both in the classroom. Um, we make sure that their area is cleaned, um, before they actually start eating, and then of course after they finish. Um, K eight comes on Monday and Tuesday, which is our goal day, nine twelve comes on Thursday and Friday, which is our goal day. Uh, our students do walk through other sectors every day, they are checked every day, um, for things that they should not have. And we make sure, even when they're coming to the space site, we are actually checking temperatures in there and answering the COVID questions as well. Culture and PBIS, to this year, we are actually really, really getting into implementing PBIS, um. So in September, our students who had great attendance and attendance from us, not just showing up to class, is actually completing the assignment. And so, and that is on their two days and on their, um, three days if they're at home, so for those kids, we have movement and pizza day. Uh, we have implemented student of the month, so one of our students was the student of the month, because he was, um, extremely vigilant in completing his assignments, coming to school every day, and even logging on at home, um, to, um, completed his assignment under that home day. And then the last picture is just something that we did to celebrate our teachers, because we do appreciate them, and we know that they are working harder now than they ever have, a lot of them, and so that was, um, world teacher day. And so what we did was set up a little, um, they were all individually wrapped to be very safe, but we went and got donuts, um, from street cream and water and juice, and so they just kind of got back to the conference hall, so they could grab something, uh, on their way to their classroom. Expectations for CSA, um, at most schools, we do have our PBIS expectation, um, and ours are responsible, we productive, and we respectful. Again, we are the alternative school, so those are some things that we sat down and to be out of things and decided that our kids really need to focus on, not just like I said earlier while they're with us, but, um, when they actually return to their homes, or just whatever. Blended learning, hybrid, and virtual. So with our hybrid, um, of course, we started K eight. Um, we have a protocol that our students have to follow when they are at home. And the protocol is on that, for K eight is Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, they have to, um, when they're, for our virtual kids, that protocol. We do have protocols for our hybrid kids as well, and they have to actually log in on those Wednesday, Thursdays, and Fridays, K eight, and Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays for nine twelve to complete those assignments with those teachers. If they have questions or they're not, they're confused about something, our teachers constantly have a team, and so they're able to call their teachers on team if they're at home, when they're at home, they actually ask questions for that. Um, we, our schedule is divided into ninety-minute blocks, E L A for K eight and math are the ninety-minute blocks, and I do have some, um, smaller blocks. We have two fifty-five-minute blocks and a forty-five-minute block. So the two ninety-minute blocks, we actually dedicate those for E L A and math for K eight, and then for high school, we dedicate the ninety-minute blocks to those students who have state-tested areas. Um, as you know, the high school schedules may or may not, when they come to us, they may or may not have a tested area, state-tested area on their schedule, but for those that do, we made sure that we gave them the ninety-minute blocks, um, of time. And then our last block is used for S E L. Uh, during the S E L, we do several different things, we have our literacy, um, block during that time as well, we have, we allow that time for students , um, to kind of, you know, bed or do whatever they need to do, um, we also use the S E L time for our behavior interventions. For our virtual students, um, it turns out that all of my virtual students were all K eight students, no high school, none of my high school students were virtual students. So, um, in that, or because of that, rather, um, not all of those students had access to a computer and or internet. So my space bike was open or is open for our virtual kids, uh, when they come on Wednesday, Thursdays, and Fridays. Now, granted, they don't stay all day, they only come in alone enough to get their assignment done. If their teachers, um, I'm sorry, if they have questions for their teachers, their teachers will log on to them, go where in the same building, they're virtual, they're space bikes, they're on one end of the hallway, the teachers are in their classrooms, the teachers will log in, they can call. Um, their teachers on teams, and they log on with them and assist them if they need help. Otherwise, they come in, complete their assignment, and then they leave, they do come in at the end of the hallway. I have my, um, I S D eighteen is running my space bike, because we don't have I S D now, because we're, we're hybrid. Uh, so we don't have any kids coming over for I S D yet, we say it like that, we don't have any yet, which is a good thing. Um, and so she's naturally in charge of my space bike, so she checks attempts, they come out the questionnaire, and she'll let us know when to call parents, um, come and pick their children up, because like I said, they're all K eight, so none of them actually live. Um, of course, we do S E L with our virtual students, the teachers log on with them, um, whatever their two days are, if they're high school, they log on with them on Thursdays and Fridays, if they're K eight, they log on with them on Mondays and Tuesdays. And we make sure that in addition to what they're getting or what they need to get it for their academics, that we actually cover an S E L, S E L key with them as well. And then we're in the process of, of trying to figure out how we can really, um, include our virtual students in our PBIS, especially when it comes to celebrations, when they're doing what they're supposed to do, so we're actually working on a plan to actually, um, allow them to be able to participate with PBIS as well, even though they are at home. Uh, for our S E L, like I said, the teacher will set up meetings with the virtual students, and, um, this week, we started on our M K assessment, our mentoring assessment. And so our students have been coming to the space bike to take the test, all of our virtual students that come in, um, on the day today, we're together to test, to take their test, um, on campus or on site. Okay, my data, as I stated earlier, it's gonna be a little bit different, so when, the reason why it's kind of like you see it is because I don't have money for it, okay? So this is how he tested, um, for his phonetic awareness, he was on a grade level, phonics, the same, and high-frequency words, which I am very, very proud of him because of his background, we'll just say that, okay, so for him to come in before on a grade level, especially in those three categories, is amazing, even though he was two or more grade levels below in vocabulary, comprehension, literature, and then informational text comprehension. So the fact of the matter is, when, once we get that phonetic awareness, that phonics and those high-frequency words, we're gonna eventually move into vocabulary, and then his reading literature, um, comprehension, of, uh, literature and his comprehension for informational text. I have several seventh graders, uh, phonetic awareness, and this is when they tested the course, um, in August. And actually, their scores, when I did the comparison, their scores when they ended in March were not much different from when they tested at the end of the year this year, it may have been one or two points different. Um, and then that eighth grader, he was not even in the district at school, um, last year, for the most part, he came even back to my building uh, in August, like, for like five days, and then he left, and he was gone, and then he came back this August, so this is what he's done in a sense, on his own, since he's been out, so I'm very, very proud of his results. Um, moving on to our seventh graders, phonetic awareness, a hundred percent of them tested, um, on a grade level, seventy-five percent tested on a above grade level in phonics, where twenty-five percent of them, um, tested two levels below, high-frequency words, one hundred percent of them tested on a above grade level. For vocabulary, twenty-five percent of them were one grade low, um, one grade below, uh, one, I'm sorry, grade level below. And seventy-five percent of them were two or more grades above, so we know that vocabulary is an area that we need to work on with all of our areas, not just the second grader or the eighth grader, even with the fifth grader, this is the momentary. Um, literature comprehension, seventy-five percent tested on above, twenty-five percent, two or more grade levels below, and then comprehension, informational text. It was reversed, twenty-five percent tested on grade level, and seventy-five percent tested, um, two or more grade levels below, and if you, what we're doing is for making sure we get that informational text equal to or above the literature text, and I'm having my science and my history teacher to start working on articles with their children, with their students, and working on the comprehension questions, this is, it's the same concept that we're using in the E L A, but we're actually doing even more informational text with our science and our social studies. And with our sixth grader, I'm very proud of my sixth grader, because I only have one of those, he tested on a low grade level in every category, so I'm very, very proud of him. And all of these students, with the exception of the eighth grader, were with us when we ended the year last year, and they took it all over again this year. From math, um, my one eighth grader, um, tested two or more grades below in every area in math. Um, again, like I said, he was not in school at all last year, basically, he didn't stay at all, so he was with me for five days, um, and so we are working with him. He realizes, um, one thing about him is that he realizes that he's low, and he wants to do better. So it's, it's all we need is for him to want to do better, and we're gonna make sure we can do whatever we need to do, um, at CSA to ensure that he does do better. For seventh grader, uh, number and operation, seventy-five percent were one or more grade level below, where twenty-five percent were two or more below. Algebra and algebra thinking, they were all over, we had, um, twenty-five percent, which is one of our, one of our students, was, um, on grade level. Twenty-five percent was one grade level below, and then fifty percent were two or more. Measurement and data, same thing, twenty-five percent on, fifty percent were one or more below, whereas twenty-five percent were two or more below. And then the geometry, which that's that, um, part of math that they cover at the end of the year, that fourth, ninth, um, twenty-five percent were, um, one grade level below, and then seventy-five percent were two or more grade levels below. And with our sixth grader, math is very difficult, and so all of his, um, areas were two or more grade levels below, so again, we are definitely working with him because that's the most, we only have one square, so he is getting intense, um, instruction from his math teacher to make sure that he is on grade level by the time he leaves the sixth grade this year. Okay, MTSS and subgroup interventions. Um, thirty percent of our growing are, um, special education children, they're in tier two, three, they receive daily interventions, and then Wednesday through Friday, um, they also receive virtual interventions via Teams, now, I will point out that my special ed population does cover just the middle school, they're just middle school. It's great, none of my high schools are, um, step population. So on Wednesday through Friday, Wednesday through Friday, when they're not in class, our teacher gets on with them via Teams to make sure they get all of the interventions that they're needed. And she also goes over, um, any assignments that they have, and of course, she's in the classroom with them while they're there, um, on Monday, Tuesday, so she kind of knows where they're with us this part. Um, sixty-four percent of our population of students are tier two, and of course, we are the alternative school, so all of our kids are in behavior intervention as we can go with that. Again, we're a school of hope, having all the positive expectations, are there any questions?
Well, remember, um, one thing I'd like to comment is thank you for welcoming us into your school, to put all the celebration together, I know it's a lot of production and moving parts, and, you know, doing the effort and good job you're doing there, and so thank you for dual-rolling in there for.
Most definitely, I was thrilled to be, and honored to be a part of it, but thank you guys for coming, I'm glad you all did that.
Absolutely, and it's like everything is coming together on the comfort, so we'll see how it makes the rest, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we have Dr. Robinson, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can you guys see where I have my mask?
Yes, but use the mic to get this, uh, calm, calm.
I was just saying, if you have, if you have a mask on, I want to take. Yeah, we can hear you. Okay, so, um, we're the school where we're making lots of every opportunity. Um, I wanna start with our highlights, and I'm not gonna try to reveal everything up here, uh, but there's some things that we are proud of, uh, we only had two office referrals this year, no accidents. Uh, we're doing some great things, uh, at revenue as far as, um, getting our students aware they need to be, we're, we're doing standard-based assignments. We also are doing standard-based boards, some outside, we're doing interactive bulletin boards. We're celebrating our students and our employees, and we're making sure that we're taking care of our teachers and our students as far as uh, S E L's concern, of catering to their needs, making sure that they're okay, because that, that's the second thing that we wanna do besides, uh, safety. Uh, making sure that our student and our faculty members are okay. Uh, I'm, I'm very proud of the next two as well, we have a strong family engagement, we're gonna talk about that a little bit more as we go. But we're, we're having, because we have, we're doing blended learning, we're having parents as, as teachers, so they're actually helping us to teach those students, especially those that are online. And we are doing monthly family virtual meetings where we're meeting the teachers, uh, I'll meet you with them, and the parents, we're meeting. I'll meet you with them and the parents, we're meeting once a month, each grade level. And so we're finding that this is something that's helping us to move in the right direction. Because usually we do a school-wide parent meeting, and a lot of times, parents are afraid or they might be embarrassed to say what they want to say or ask questions. But we're finding when we do this by grade level, the parents are stepping up and they're asking questions, they're giving us suggestions. And I even have some parents that come talk to me, of course, I, I have the teachers getting with the role and groups online. And we would have, we have a conversation, I had one during morning duty, duty, and then I had one during the day. And the parent said, you know, you remember what you said online? And that made me feel so good because they're referring back to the conversation we had at that particular time to something that happened online. And so we're seeing that the, the students at school is starting to turn around too because of that. So that's something that we're proud of. Another thing that we're proud of is our partnership with our community people. You know, our Baptist, their death mode, they're, they're asking us all the time, it's like every other week. They're coming, what can we do? How can we help? And then we have a Sunday local church that helped us as well in the junior upbringing. Okay, safety, I know y'all probably care a lot about safety, but across the district, we're doing the same thing. You know, we have the desk six feet apart, we have the, the desk partitions, we have the D C S on the door. We have the teachers encouraging hand washing when they go into the restroom. And every time they come into the door in the classroom, they can set, uh, sanitize it in their hands. And also, they're not allowed to go to the restroom by themselves. If they're going as a group, the teachers walk them down, they go in two by two. And again, they come out, they wash their hands, and they sanitize and get room. And if there isn't room where they can go, we, we have an adult that will go down with them to walk them to the restroom. So they're never in the restroom by themselves. Okay, so this is something also that we're proud of, because this year we're doing a lot with our P B I S and trying to, to, to make our culture the way it should be, so that everybody can feel successful, everybody can be happy, and everybody could, you know, come to school being happy. I talked about grade level meeting, we have incentives for our students, for our behavior, our rating and attendance. We're also developing testing plans for the teachers, so that they can exhibit or show the student how to, to, how they need to act in certain cases. We have our matrix, what does it look like throughout the hallway? What does it look like to have hostile behavior on the bus? What does it look like when you get out from the car line? What does it look like in the restroom? And so we have that throughout the building. We also have student leaders who are, who are stepping up and helping us, because a lot of times, the students, they respect other student numbers. And so they tend to do, those students tend to get other students to do a little bit more than we can get them to do. So we have student leaders who are doing our announcements in the morning, and they introduce two, two words, and academic words. They do that for the Lord, our student, and they also do that for the other students, so we have two words a week. We have a student of the week every week, we have a problem solver of the week. And right now, what we're doing, our problem solver is we're just doing our basic math problems, but we're gonna move into doing word problems, because we know that that's some of the things that they struggle with at the end of the year. Okay, so we have a data visual wall for the students and the teachers. And when you see our data, the standard view, you're gonna, this is what, this, this wall is displayed from. It's a wall where you have the students, so we can give the percentage, we can give the number. But what we're doing, we're breaking it down to individual students, because we want them to know that, okay, it's this many students. So we have the children, bigger of children on the wall, that equal to the amount or percentage of those students. And I'll talk about that a little bit more, so come on down. Our staff meetings, we try to give praise, of positive examples, encouragement, fix problems, and we discuss that. We do a lot of discussing data. Okay, our blended learning and our hybrid virtual learning, there you can see like our scheduling, how many students on Monday, Tuesday, hybrid and virtual. And on Wednesday, we use that time for teachers to, to upload YouTube videos or to meet with M T S S students, R R P students. We also have some of those students who are virtual, so they get online and they meet with those, and then they also meet with parents. And then we do, we do some of that every day, because the students leave early, so we get to do those same things every day. Where you see the highlight there, these are some of the things that the teachers are proud of. They can have breakout rooms, so that we can do collaborative opportunities or learning for the students. Because we know that if we provide them opportunities to talk and discuss more themselves, that's gonna help them to become better and productive. They can share their strengths, and then there's meeting notifications and documentation. Okay, so I decided to do our finals here to show, this is showing nineteen twenty. This is pre-COVID, this is where we ended up, the last five months that we took. And we had nine percent of our students that was at risk, thirty-nine percent tier two, and fifty-two percent at tier one. And then I came over here and I looked at the standard view, the same view at the beginning of this year. So this is overall placement for two thousand nineteen, overall placement for twenty twenty-one. And so we see here that there is a, there was a loss, a learning loss. And so, in a few minutes, I'm gonna tell you some of the things that we're doing to try to close those gaps. Now, as you can see, there's plenty of opportunity here for us to work with the students, if you look at that yellow. You see that there's a lot of students right there that we can move to, to that tier one position. Now, math, on the other hand, research shows that math, if we have something like with COVID, that, that is harder for math. Students lose a lot from math than they do E L A, and we can see it here on this, these graphs as well. All right, so some of the things, I said I was gonna talk about some of the things that we're doing. We're having leadership blocks where we are setting aside a time for teachers to read to students. They show them how to read with expression, they ask them textbook questions, and, and they can have the students to, to do the same. And we encourage them to read when they're away from school and to do their, our rating as well. When we got together, we looked at our focus group, our fifth grader this year was our fourth grader last year. And so this is one of our focus group, because that first, that first semester, they were without a certified teacher. And so if they were without a certified teacher the first semester, and then COVID hit, and they were virtual that fourth, ninth week, because we didn't have a certified teacher. There can't be any January, but that, that fourth, ninth weeks, they went to virtual. See, that was another, like, an impact. Not having a teacher to begin, and then now for the, the last nine weeks, they're going virtual. So we all had to learn. So this is the group that we have our eyes on. They're our partner, and we're gonna make sure that we work with our kids, but we're gonna make sure that we're working with those kids more so than the others. Another thing that we're doing is our third grader. You know, our third grader, they're up for the, the reading gate every year. And so with, with our parent meeting, we're having a third grade meeting tomorrow, a grade level meeting with the parents. And our leadership coach is gonna be on that meeting with us. And she's going to talk to them about the importance of reading gate. It felt like we needed to get her in as soon as possible, so she can talk with them. And we're gonna reiterate throughout the year, some of the strategies that she's giving. We also sent home for all of the grades, I just, the third grade, but we sent home at, at home reading plan for all of the grades. So every parent has, has that. Something else that we're doing is we're making sure that parents help parents. So we're encouraging parents to help parents to, to come to the meetings. And we're also making sure that a parent trained parent. So we're selecting thirteen parents, one from each grade level, to be representatives for all of the, the grade levels. And then those parents are going to help me or sit down with us and come up with their agenda, and they're gonna run the parent meeting. And that's something that we're finding effective as well, because parents will listen to parents. And we want them to listen to them on the positive, rather than on the negative side. So that is working for us as well. Something else that we're doing at Fable is everybody is pitching in. And when I say everybody's pitching in, I'm talking about every position that you can think of. We have, we have, you, you might come and you might see the, the counselor doing intervention with a student. You might see the nurse reading a book with a student. Every moment that we have, because see, with our small classes now, there's not a lot that the nursing do. So what she's doing is she's filling in that gap by helping us academically. And then the last slide, so the, the M T S S process, we're working with our mother students, we're working with our inclusive students, our local forming group students. I can put this up here, because I knew you all probably already know this, but this is the process of, of how we go about at the end of the year. But we're looking already, where we go after we find the cut scores to those students who need the interventions. Any questions? And I hope I didn't talk too fast, I'm sorry.
Yeah, great presentation. Now, those slides that you got everything, and I like to hear the, the, the parents coming in, like I said, I think that's a great idea when it comes to parents listening to parents a lot of times, and emphasizing the positive over the negative, that's great. Well, Rupert, do you have any other comments or questions on Dr. Robinson's presentation?
I, I have a small question. And noticing, you mentioned, of course, the learning laws, and noticing that, what is, what do you think is the biggest challenge as an administrator?
Oh, I think that as an administrator, and something that I have to do is, is get, get everybody, the teachers and the students to see where we are. And, and, and I say this, I say that because of this, we have our rating report, and I told Dr. about this, is that I, I try to read and look at all the reports as much as I can. My challenge is gonna be helping the teachers to, to see, to look at this now, like I'm connected, and, and making sure that we are on the same page, and getting teachers on board, getting students on board.
Thank you. This way.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we have this department gathered. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. All right, first of all, again, I haven't met some of you formally, I'm a community student from Franklin Academy. This year, we decided to pick a theme that we felt would be fitting of the time that we're living in. So this year, we are Franklin Academy out of this world. Just a few highlights recently, thanks to our P E teacher, Coach Terry Roach, we were awarded a Smart and Healthy Grant through International Paper. The grant is gonna be used to purchase some stencils through Sensory Path. And what she plans on doing with that is, we're going to have, as you see in the bottom right-hand corner, we're gonna have some paths on the outside of our school in the back area. We just felt like it was important, while the weather is good, for our students to be able to take a few mask breaks. So this will be a very socially distant activity where the kids can go outside. And the activity patterns will be on the driveway and the concrete areas around our school. The Sensory Path and Oxford specializes in the physical activity designs, and so the child sensory will be very essential in helping our students to remain, regain their focus and control certain behaviors. Another highlight, we have a partner in progress with First United Methodist Church. They have been a tremendous blessing for us already with the school year. So what they've done, out of the kindness of their hearts, they donated clocks for us to use in our classrooms. And our students are already, they already have an understanding that if the red disappears, this is helping them transition from one task to another. So they're pretty cool clocks, and we were trying to display it on the picture, but the time ran out, had to snap the picture, so you can't see the red. But they're being used to help the students understand the transition schedules, because time is completely, truly up against us right now as we're doing, during this hyper process. Of course, with safety, I'm sure all of our principal performing have already spoken on this, but all students and staff have a busy process that they must go through each morning. As you can see on the picture on the left, the desks are spaced out for so, adhering to the social distancing guideline. The picture in the middle, the district was gracious to provide us with some, some dividers for our desks, for, some shields for our desks for safety reasons. And so what we started doing is use those desk shields for our small group interaction. And just something as simple as a binder hood has been able to, has helped us to get, be able to get our standards done effectively. And of course, the students will always keep their mask on during that time. And just here, I was able to walk into a classroom, my teacher was teaching the students the very beginning of the year, the safety measures of how to properly put on your mask, because we all, we're all touching our mask all the time. So she was just reinforcing to the student that you always touch it through the hair loop, we're all guilty with touching it everywhere else, so I just wanted to include that. Also, we, at the beginning of the semester, before the semester began, we did purchase some P P E supplies for our building. The district did install the sanitation stations, each classroom teacher was provided a touchless scanner. And Florida counts have been positioned on our floors to reinforce the social distancing guidelines. And we've been blessed, some of the things that were on backorder, we actually started getting those things coincidentally in this week, so we're actually happy about that. The culture and climate of our building along with our P B I S, so we actually tried to get an early jump start with our P B I S at Franklin Academy, because we wanted to just reshift the focus. The kids have been hearing pandemic, pandemic, COVID, COVID, COVID since March. So we just wanted to go ahead and shift their focus as early as possible. As you can see, our focus for October, we're doing breast cancer awareness, having our spirit week. And then what's missing on next week is we're trying to do Red Ribbon Week and Boolean Prevention all at one time. But our main focus for our P B I S is we're focusing on the attendance factor. What we realized is doing some research back, going back to last year, attendance was an issue before COVID nineteen. So what we're doing this year is we're just trying to just look at the factors. Of course, now, we have all of these barriers in place with virtual and hybrid and not having technology and et cetera, et cetera. So we're just making sure that we're doing all the weekends in touch base with parents. Like you figured out, we can do it Franklin Academy to assist our parents, and making sure that our school, our students are at school and on lives with us, opposed to. We are in the development process of finding ways to incorporate our virtual students. Some examples that we have already covered is we plan on using some of our, partnering with our parents to make some morning, because they drive through to a muffin's with mom, donuts with dad, and just talk to them about being more involved with us. And also, we have some virtual ideas in mind, maybe a couple of virtual dances, and some other things that I will address in some later slides. So I already spoke about this, our culture, our focus is improving our student attendance. We do have an action plan where we will use the information that we've obtained to improve our daily attendance by December first. So with our blended learning, of course, on Mondays and Tuesdays, our teachers at Franklin Academy, they combine their virtual and hybrid experience by focusing on both at one time. Each classroom does either have an A T or a special class facilitator that will come and sit in and monitor the computers while the virtual session is going on in the event that our virtual students have questions. Trying to make sure that they are engaged, little things like turn your camera on, mute your camera, do you have a question? Mrs. Sparks, such, such has a question, or Mrs. Smart, you know, just going back and forth and being the mediator between the virtual students and the teacher. And of course, we're using Microsoft Teams, our rating. And we've also introduced using Venti and some other platforms for our teachers to incorporate in their hybrid virtual experience. So moving on to our data, this is our beginning of the year, came readiness data. As you see, our seventy, about seventy, about eighty percent of our kindergarten score early emergent, and about twenty-five percent. And about twenty-five percent of them scored in the late emergent. And then when you go to our already data, um some of this is due to a lot of our parents still weren't comprehending the difference between these two tests. So we did have quite a few students missing, but we do have thirteen percent that scored at or above grade level. But of course, this is your their first year, so this is their grade level, they wouldn't be below. Um and then eighty-seven percent of our kindergarten students and a good bit of those students did not attend pre-K. So moving on to our math data, it has changed slightly since I put this presentation together, so I'll just read it up for you. Um about sixty-six percent of our students scored tier two for math, uh thirty percent were tier three. And only four percent were uh tier one. And just to reiterate what Dr. Robinson just explained to you, math is one of those skills that kind of continues on. And so um parents have our app to make their kids read at home, but we don't have a whole lot of parents reinforcing math when school is out. So what we did do was over the past couple of weeks, once we started seeing how our data was progressing, our K through five teachers hosted some virtual math nights for our parents. Um what we what I told them was um I did a project in my master's program and it was about achievement gaps. And what I learned was that you have so many parents who are less likely to say, I don't know. And they don't say, I don't know because of intimidation, they don't say, I don't know because they don't want their children to realize that they don't understand. So we hosted those math nights so that our parents could have a grasp on what we're working on now and what's coming up. And we had a decent turnout, it could have been better, but we will continue to be in the future. And this is the same, um just a breakdown by grade level. Um of course, there is a lot of, a lot more of our students were in the yellow, but again, I do believe that that I do have a whole lot of faith that that is going to go up. So our reading data, again, this has changed since I put this presentation together. On a tier three level, we had about twenty-one percent of our students were tier three, fifty-nine percent were tier two, and twenty percent were tier one. I'm actually proud of this data, um I know we don't like the red, but I do feel like with a five, five months of not being in school and you missing the last nine weeks of school, I do feel like this could have been worse. So um our teachers are working very hard, uh takes complexity and just reinforcing the rigor. And um we're working hard getting with our parents and just helping them understand that we need their help at home as well. And we also did host some grade level E L A nights, virtual nights for our parents. And this is the breakdown by grade level as well. So lastly, we are um we did begin our E T S S in club groups early with our intervention. Um our intervention has been working very hard since early September. Um we just kind of tried to monitor the data before the diagnostics were complete because we wanted to get as early as a head start as possible. So um we've got our tier two students and our tier tier two reading students and our tier three math students. The classroom teachers are providing the interventions for those tier three reading students. Our special education teachers are working with um the tier students with the parallel reading goals. The M T S S folders have been provided by our site, M T S S coordinator. And the meetings did begin and they actually went a whole lot better than expected. Um our second graders, we have about sixteen uh second graders, uh we have about twenty third graders, uh five fourth graders and five fifth graders. And the split of that, um some some of those kind of roll over, the students that are doing the math also are doing the reading, but they are working very hard. And um we actually also had some meetings with our virtual parents and our teachers are implementing virtual interventions as well. So our focus is on acceleration, not remediation, we're teaching the grade level content and providing interventions for their deficit areas. We're conducting regular interventions using evidence-based resources and we're making sure that we're uh constantly progress monitoring throughout uh on a daily basis as well as weekly basis. So any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions? Ellen Smith, you did a great job, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're recording.
No, no. Yay. Thank you.
Thank you, buddy. Um next up, Dr. Kennedy. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcome back. Welcome to the spirit elevator, um we are setting the stage for success and we try um to make that A is welcome to your way. Here you see pictures of our P B I S kickoff rally, working with um our regular parks and recreation, these are great rulers. So that our students can be outside and be socially distant on as we kick off our go bring rally. This was a celebration of students who scored grade level or already got enough to test at all. These are other school highlights, um we have a little competition, we want our school to look uh fun, a learn a fun learning activity for all of our students. Um want standard space environments on our doors, on our walls and the hallway. Um students are able to learn if there's a line goes to the restroom, all throughout the building, they are learning. This was the winner of the competition of our door uh competition, our standard space door competition, the winner um was provided lunch on the. And as all of my colleagues have said, um we pretty much all got the same safety um plan in place. We got the the monitors where um no one's temp can be one hundred point four or above or they cannot enter the building. We got the public entry questions, um hand sanitizer in the hallway, which we encourage students to use. Um hand washing is frequent uh throughout the day and we don't change places on this whole sphere. The culture and atmosphere, exosphere, I can see a drastic change on their culture. There's a lot of activity that's going on, hands-on activities, if aren't allowed to go outside for recess, we try to make sure they have fun and engaging activities indoors. This is our um hands-on science activity, this is pre-K class, this is a science day. Uh where they demonstrated um the public wheel and how to mix different colors um to make new colors and also demonstrated various substances that may be or that don't mix with a lot more and more. This is um one of my, well, my on the self-contained class, we have high expectations for all students. What you see here is the center um that's going on for some of the higher functioning students that are in the self-contained classroom. Um the centers are um differentiated depending on the level of the students, but we have high expectations for all students. And now to the data. What we see here is the hybrid learning, I have pull it out on third grade to focus on. Um and so here, we are blessed to have outside corridors and court yards for every classroom, so they are able to get some outside activity. Um for the hybrid, of course, we do have the inference instruction for two days of the week. All of the learning is standard based learning, um and it has been proven to be effective with behavior. And getting in and really digging deep with the small number of students that we have in the classroom table. This is a snapshot from like August um data from I ready. I want you to uh, I'm gonna focus on the next slide, which is our virtual, still for third grade. We still continue to have fun, lots of engagement. The thing with the virtual is that we do have the.
If you don't mind, I'll take this off and give you, would you, the beginning to my first?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no problem.
Is that better? Yeah, okay. This is the virtual. Okay, this is the virtual um learning. What you notice here with the difference is the increased parental engagement. Because our parents are sitting with most of our students or they're very close by and the teachers are able to communicate with the parents. Um we have students who are not online um at a particular time, teachers are texting the parents or um A T calling the parent, your student is not logged in. So the um parental engagement is increased here. But if we look at the numbers here, um there are fewer students in red than in the virtual. And there's a higher percentage in green than the hybrid. So I think the parental engagement here is what makes the difference. Okay, this is the data that's showing the first green is August two thousand nineteen versus um August twenty twenty. As we look at these two figures, there is not much difference at all, um even after five months of no instruction. Um there's only one percent difference. Here is um pre-COVID nineteen, what you see in the big um triangle is the data from January twenty twenty, so that's current data. And I also want you to think about the data that we just looked at, that's August twenty nineteen. What one focuses on here, last year in five months, we were able to flip um that triangle. So where in twenty nineteen, you see the red, there were twenty-nine percent. In just that five month period of time, um that twenty-nine percent dropped to eighteen, which means that we grew students, they moved to the yellow section. The yellow section dropped from fifty-two to forty and the green section, or the don't, from eighteen percent to forty-two. So that lets us know that we were on the right track, but we're trying to continue the pattern. Here is the M T S S and subgroup intervention, we tested three hundred nineteen students. Um thirty percent of those students were two or more grade up below, which was in the red. Thirty percent equated to ninety-six students. We went beyond those ninety-six to in include the students that were on the bubble, so we ended up with one hundred and fourteen students that we identified for intervention. Of those one fourteen, we have sixteen of those students with I E Ps who are receiving small group instruction um as support from their inclusion teacher. Other students are receiving M T S S um support, which is thirty to forty-five minutes, thirty thousand a week. And individual reading plan, which is data of thirty minutes of intervention. Our action plan is exosphere, our special teachers such as P E and um library and technology, they provide their instruction through um via videos. So we implement um with those teachers to work in small groups to provide interventions, they are certified teachers to provide interventions. So um a small group of kids who are on intervention plans are able to get more individualized instruction from the special teachers. And that is through M T S S and R P. We're using our state site to provide um interventions even further and we're gonna have to after hours start a number of women first and some Saturday stop one. We're increasing the rigor in pre-K through two and also school-wide policy and that depends upon the um upon the stagger as to what strategies we use. So we use the Mississippi scaffolding document to go back and make sure that students um that we go back and reinforce the skills that they missed, especially for that last half week. Uh though that they didn't receive a lecture. And we are implementing our P B I S or our Renaissance store to celebrate success with our teachers and our students. So that we can continue to set the stage for success and make that A, this is what's we're inviting. Any questions from any?
Board members, do you have any questions? Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patient work. Yes, ma'am.
Tell them I said thank you.
Thank you very much and uh board, looking at our, excuse me, um looking at our agenda that moves us to uh the consent agenda. We have our policies there under A one, um number two, and these policies speak up for consideration to November the ninth meeting. We have our dates to remember, our activity dates that are upcoming, athletic dates for football and basketball and uh junior high and high school. And then of course soccer, and our upcoming board uh meetings, the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth. Uh the different times that's there, then our November means November the fourth and November the ninth and take those to November the ninth meeting will be moved to uh Torin Cook. Then we have consideration to revise that athletic schedule, so if we could to approve the consent agenda, I need a motion to approve.
So.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, do I have a second? That's considered by Ms. Yon, any discussion? Okay, here, no discussion, all in favor, please signify from right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote? Ms. Cox? Hello, Ms. Cox? Okay, uh it is unanimous for. Next, we go to our open forum, uh do we have anyone signed up for open forum, okay? Uh now we go to the office of business management, uh we have our fund balance reports, our um, excuse me, monthly financial statements. Uh fund balance reports, month revenue budget report, expenditure budget report, certification and summary of recognized bank statements for June, July and August. Uh so board, I need a motion to approve financials.
So.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, I'll make the second, any discussion? Okay, here, no discussion, all in favor.
Thank you for choosing.
All in favor, please signify from right hand.
Take for free.
Uh Ms. Cox, are you on the line with us?
Please announce yourself.
Ms. Cox? Okay, it is unanimous for. Uh next, we go to our ad glourum tax collections report, uh board, are there any questions about the ad glourum tax collection report? Okay, athletic events report, are there any questions regarding athletic events report? Okay, uh discussion of Hunt campus. Um Ms. Cox, come back with us. All right, uh we are now um under the office of business management. And I think this is a duplicate uh from up above, we got the report uh there, but the reason I put it down here, I'm gonna retit it a little bit. Is this is where we would talk about any expenditures or or reimbursement uh pay at at Hunt. So do we know any type of, and and what I think the board, the intent of this item, just to be clear kind of going forward, is number one is we talked about we can track month to month. We can see on the docket where we stand uh for any reimbursement that the district has to pay itself back. And then secondly, when money comes in, whether it be from insurance payments for the next phase of the project or M E M A F E M A. That those are clearly identified on a separate report so that we can look here at this item and see how much money that we received. Is that why I actually sent this up so going forward in this major way with the redevelopment, that we have a clear picture of those expenses that are happening there at the campus.
Yep, this report, I really, because we're reporting everything for August, the report that I had given you last month for you to make the decision of the transfer was about today's information. So the information hasn't changed by the end of August. Now in September, we do have two payments that are going out. It's hitting our books, the expenditure side in September, but it's really in this October docket, we just approve back every month.
Right.
So the hundred and forty-three something thousand that you see in the docket for this month is is the only expenditures we've had since the board made the decision to try to prevent it. To start us off um at a zero.
Okay, and I guess the biggest thing, I know probably as we leap ahead into twenty twenty-one, we should probably start seeing more money from FEMA, M E M A, insurance, you know, additional payments. And we just wanna make sure that those are, and I understand how it improves, you know, you kind of have to reach back, how our cycles work, but that we if we get a report, we don't go five or six months and don't see anything. And then all of a sudden, there's this big dump of information and we have to sort through it at that point, but we're at least reconciling it as the cycle permits. And you know, we do see things expended on the budget, on the the docket, but I think the big thing for us is just truly keeping up with the cost and any monies that are coming in.
Well, what I can do is I updated the spreadsheet that I had been giving you with today's docket numbers in there and asked us what are the relevant board resources. So y'all can see it, even though you're not seeing the financials that cover it, you can still see them on a spreadsheet. You can see that the cash in, our money market reconciles to our bank statement at September thirtieth. And the expenditures reconciled to our general ledger at September thirtieth, even though those aren't the financials you're looking at, I am still gonna consolidate currently.
Okay, board, y'all good with that, break them? All right, thank you. All right, um next, we go to uh consideration and discussion to approve budget amendments, uh board, I need a motion to approve.
So.
So.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks. I'll make the second. Any discussion? And being no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yeah.
It is unanimous, I vote. Uh next, if we could, we'll take eleven, twelve, and thirteen together. We lost stuff, we found stuff, we lost stuff and found stuff. So we'll put them all into one motion if that's okay, board?
Eleven, sorry, eleven, twelve.
That's one point eleven, one point twelve, and one point thirteen, and one point fourteen.
I actually had to double check with the auditor on that one because some things she had already approved her disposal because they were lost or were stolen and then we recovered them. But they're still obsolete.
Right.
But we had to make sure that you were discarding them from our inventory for the right reason.
Sure.
So they had to come back and then go.
All right, all right, that sounds, I like processes, so that sounds good to me. So is it okay to take those four together, board? All right, so I need a motion to approve. Has been motioned by Dr. She made, seconded by Ms. Yon. Any discussion?
Uh actually, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What happened with all the computers that were about thirty-something computers that were stolen from Columbus High School? Can somebody fill me in on that? It's it's um items like number five through number forty-two. There are HP laptops and then a couple, a handful of MacBooks, all stolen.
Uh, was that, was that your inventory?
I I don't know, that's not on my inventory, that's all in high school.
Well, why, I'm sorry?
I I don't, I don't know.
No, I mean, I'm just asking if anybody knows, I mean, that's a, looks like somebody with a jackpot.
It really does look like someone with a jackpot. I feel that maybe in their inventory and all this time, they haven't yet reported that they didn't find it. Or they reported they didn't find it, but they didn't remove it from their inventory. And we're still looking for these items. What we did now is, Jacy has a program where he can tell if someone logs into a computer.
Yeah, that's my next question. I mean, they're all seemingly dated purchase, it's kind of weird, all of them are July first, two thousand fifteen, all the um HP laptops.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I feel what could have happened with these is maybe someone realized that they were obsolete and stuck them somewhere and they didn't tell anybody. You know, that's something that Ms. Tackett is, you know, still going through all the buildings, she's still doing inventories. She was at sale this morning. But without them showing up, they're not reported for, you know, multiple inventories. But eventually, we have to get them off of our inventory and add a comparable saying that we're droning them and they haven't been located.
So we can see that the the units were ordered, they were paid for, and they were received, that's why they're in our inventory. But we don't know where they went after they were logged into our inventory.
Well, this is in two thousand fifteen.
Oh, I know.
Well, no, our inventory does keep up with locations. They make new inventories twice a year. But that's, that's the only thing that I can explain to you is they haven't been located. And I don't know if if it's just, that was the easy answer, is to say, well, they're just lost, they're stolen. I don't know. I'll find out for you, but that would be. Yeah, all of them are obsolete, but that's not the reason that they're being located on our inventory.
It should be junk.
They really should, but.
But we can't just act fine, so we're going to blame the board. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so um all in favor of approving, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote? Ms. Cox?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, it is unanimous. Next, we go to consideration discussion to approve contract between C M S D and St. Clair C P A for F Y twenty and F Y twenty-one. Uh I believe that would be for auditing services. And so uh Miss um St. Clair was the lady who presented to us earlier today. So I need a motion to approve the contract, please.
So.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks. Do I have a second? Has been seconded by Ms. Yon. Any discussion? I can hear you, no discussion. All in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. Now, on this next item, even though there's no conflict, I'm going to recuse myself of Mr. Sparks. You would take over for the next item here.
All right, next item is consideration and or discussion to approve Hunt new risk insurance. I will turn it over to Dr. Robot.
Yeah, I'll take it.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, I'm actually glad the board brought it to my attention that the Hunt risk insurance, you know, it was sitting out there on our contract list. And it was with old dates, and I thought the dates weren't type of. I just used to normally risk insurance followers, of course, of the project, and isn't, it doesn't end after just a year. And so when I went to look into that, I realized that we did not have insurance, we didn't have risk insurance on Hunt. I contacted our old insurance company to see if we could just get something to extend. While I didn't answer their questions that they asked of me, they never gave me another quote. So Yalloway was the only one who gave me a quote over the insurance.
So basically, would you say it's by default?
By default, I didn't have a second quote.
Okay, um you didn't want to have any questions?
I did not have a missing, but now the um the person I spoke with at Yalloway Chamber, and he did say that the premiums came in higher than they anticipated. But that's really because of the market right now, that it's still a competitive quote. I think it's for Liberty who has our other insurances. But no, that that was the best quote that he could buy for us. And I didn't get an answer from the other company.
And this could be for one year?
Yes, I know.
And Chelsea, definitely, the board, tornadoes and after our state premiums that went up across the state. Um you know, also when they generated all the tops, I'm sorry, all that all the policy were together, remember last July?
Yeah.
We had, so Hunt was all together. And so um after this, after the tornado and starting the process of weatherization, that's probably when this issue arose. But like I said, the insurance initially was all together um under one policy. So it, but that's how we called it, we're going to do um insurance at this.
You got a question? This one move, one exception.
I don't believe you have the quote.
I'm going to move by Dr. She made, second.
First one.
That's seconded by Ms. Yon. Okay, all in favor, raise your right, raise your right hand. Ms. Cox? Ms. Cox?
Yeah.
How do you vote? Which is fun to do, all would let her vote.
I have no answer.
Ms. Cox?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how do you vote on this item?
Yeah.
Um, thank you. It is unanimous.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
All right, so now we're to item one point one seven. Okay, so the claims docket, I need a motion to approve pay bills.
So.
Been motioned by Mr. Sparks. I'll make the second. Any discussion?
I have a few questions um in front of the, um. Our energy call for C S for Columbus Middle School, there's quite.
The energy bills?
Uh-huh, the Atlas deal. Is there a waiting for?
Uh, what happened is they weren't paying attention in the springtime whenever they were billing us. I don't think they were really reading our years. And so they ended up giving us a huge eleven thousand dollar bill. Um, um, for like, I think it was March and April, possibly May as well. You know, that's something that Dr. D. David Miss Blant did call Atlas and say, hey, what's going on? Why are we getting this huge bill?
They billed us a three months, do they think?
They billed us for the additional cost of what they had not been doing for us. Then um it is a cost that I create back until the whole year because it happened in the whole year. It was, I think, eleven thousand dollars worth.
What? That's actually, I thought they won because for county.
They did the same thing.
Nineteen thousand, almost twenty thousand dollars.
For the high school.
And then there was another bill right after that for eighteen thousand.
They must not have dated yet for the whole year, Atlas time was exactly what it was for. Yeah, there must not have been anything weird on the bill or Miss Blant that have brought that to our attention.
I guess my question, does it align with the savings they were receiving or?
Uh, he said they did find a leak out there.
It was, what happened? On that, it was uh, I think it was like March, April, and May that they went in and they did a guesstimation on the uh bill. They didn't go in and look at the uh bill, they they did a guesstimation. So when I saw it and this got brought into my attention, we we went ahead and called Atlas to find out, to get an explanation of it and find out what really going, is going on here because that wasn't uh extremely high bill in my eyes. When I seen that, you know, eleven thousand dollars, I was saying, that's too much for gas. Because I I don't understand that you got electricity and the gas is this much. So what ended up, they, I did send somebody out to uh and Mr. Littleman, and they did have a a gas leak on the outside, which they went ahead and fixed. But again, they didn't read the meters, so they had to go back and do meter readings and and make sure that the uh, you know, the meter readings were accurate. Now, at at that point, I couldn't, I can't tell you from after that how they get, you know, that that uh bill to still be that high. Because I was still arguing the point of how you're going to just estimate or guesstimate what we we owe you.
I just, just one thing, I'm looking at the Atlas Energy and it's thirty-two hundred dollars, eleven thousand.
That must have been the middle of the docket for last month. There was one.
Well, I I mean, I I I understand what what they're saying, but I I guess my, okay, so start with the leak aspect of it. Was the leak on us or on them?
It actually was on, when it was on outside.
Okay, and do we know what caused the leak?
I don't, I don't know.
And and so whether any late fees or extra charge, search, search charges added to the bill because?
No, but they had not billed us. It's not that they billed us initially and we refused to pay it. We didn't see the bill until it was told, until September's docket.
So will this be the end of the large bill that we have to handle or?
For Atlas?
Yeah.
He said it should be, but we'll keep our eyes on it.
I mean, I guess the, and I'll I'll go back, I mean, I didn't measure it out here, but just to see what our average bill would be over the last twelve months and see how it compares. And then make, give an idea as to when the leak started, if you start seeing elevated consumption. So, but I see you see. Are there any other questions on the?
Um, the supply of water with um for the for the high school.
Was twenty-two thousand?
Yeah.
I was on page four, there was a bucket.
Yeah, that's where I'm.
In the high school.
Um, do we know whether there's an increase there as well, um?
No, but I will do a search over utilities.
And you know, I know that, when was it, they increased rates, hopefully. I thought they increased rates not long ago, so I don't know when those took effect. So that may contribute to some of, but at the same time, it's still worth finding out. And Mr. Gunn, let me ask you a question before I go to that one. I mean, I I guess it's just a practice they have of just guesstimate and then come to actually do a reading. I mean, is that anything that we have any?
No, sir.
Okay.
I know the city at one time did that, back when they used to physically read like water meters. Uh they'd go three months sometimes and then they'd read. Now, I think most of them, they're electronic, they just drive a truck by and reads it. But I don't know any law that says they have to read it monthly, if they don't read it, you don't pay it. Unfortunately, by their not reading it, you know, to me, that exposure, the leak wouldn't have gone on that long probably if they had believed it at the time. Just quite unfair.
Well, that goes back to, you know, is there anything that, you know, that we could say, look, I understand this happened and we have a leak, but we lost X amount because of, and I would call it their negligence, but I mean, how are we going to know unless we have a major issue?
Right, I, you know, I think that there's no harm in doing that, you know, the the old scripture, if you have not, for you ask not.
Right.
Maybe you just need to say it, you know, just help us understand why you're not part of the problem here.
Well, I mean, can we at least ask and see, look, is there something that?
We can.
I mean, we've got an average cost, and we see that it's elevated by X percent, well, then certainly that's.
Obviously, you don't think that that's their normal process, marches which have been getting, everybody was laying low. I don't think that that's their normal process, but I can call someone and speak to them just to make sure that that isn't.
Yeah, I have one more item. The one item down, um it was a traveling tent. Um, and I was, is that uh mid-district traveling tents, is this um? Let's see, yeah, um. It's on the third page, it's now, um, I'm thinking, on the second page. Is it? Yeah. I'm on the, on the third page.
On the second page?
Yeah, for two thousand nine, um students.
Who is it?
One.
Yeah.
It's for my Bailey. I guess it's um, is C H Y N?
Bailey.
I think that would be part of.
Was coding then, um, uh, five twenty-six fourteen, so was that the title too?
It's special education.
Okay. Okay.
I think that she probably is traveling back and forth. Oh, Ms. Joyce Finley. She's one of our special education teachers. And she does do um speech pathology and audio. It's, well, it's not just that, she goes uh school to school.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
They're on the walls, I'll show.
Okay. Uh here is no other questions or comments, all in favor of approving the document, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
I'm in.
It is unanimous. Now we go to the federal programs, I D A monthly financial report. Board, is there any questions uh about the report that was presented at office thirty-first? Okay, uh next, we go to office of superintendent school operations, Dr. Watson, traveling out and about. All right, uh so that's the report there. Uh next, we have superintendent designated for Ford's discussion about the community-based accountability model. Dr. Bot.
Dr. She making out of attended the meeting on March sixth, twenty twenty.
Dr. Schumay cannot attend the meeting on March sixth, twenty twenty, about a community-based accountability model. Um, several districts throughout the state have a, um, a, a community-based model. It has nothing to do with our current accountability system. It's just a way of measuring things that are not in the accountability system, such as portrait of graduate. Um, looking at your, um, current graduates, let's say you have two hundred and twenty graduates. How many are workforce ready? How many are enlistment ready? How many are college ready? Let's say they, they need benchmark. And having a, a different evaluation system based on your community. Um, you can add categories such as, uh, work placement, um, in your community model. So it's a way of looking at measurements that are not necessarily an accountability model. Sometimes people look at it as, as a replacement. Uh, but there's a lot of things that schools do well that are not measured. And it's the reason why some of the questions on your legislative questionnaire had something to do with accountability issues because there have been discussions throughout the state. Um, I've been in a five-day training with, um, the education committee for, um, the state and we've discussed things that are important like portrait of a graduate, um, post-graduation. Um, the importance of tracking students to see if they're successful. Ultimately, that being a goal is really set economic development. So the community-based model is primarily things that are not measured within the accountability model. Um, people have been with us for the last fifteen, twenty years. I probably get named, probably there would be forty superintendents sitting around in the state and have done it. Um, Texas has done it for years, um, all across the northeast, northwest, uh, uh, United States have had a community-based model. So the premise of the meeting that Dr. Schumay and I attended was for, um, for us to set our own criteria. So it's not like you get an A, right? You have to, you have to have certain metrics that you come up with, you know? If we say that we have two hundred graduates and our goal is to place twenty-five percent in job placement after work keeps them, they're taking the assessment. Then that would be our goal and we'll be evaluating that goal. And so it's almost like a parallel system to what you're currently doing. Um, the proposal is, it wanted to start this year. I, um, did not want to start this year, but what we're trying to do in our hybrid schedule to your capacity and things we have in, um, our, our principals are grown, police and balance, as you've seen. And we really have to focus on the time spent in classroom professional development. So they do propose that next year we start some professional development on how to look at this model. It would include board members for us to look at other indicators. Um, and may, we may look at, uh, community service, uh, and other things that are positive towards the district. Um, what, what we've learned in professional development and from the media is that, um, especially with our current model, um, automatically because it's, they'll, or thirty-seven percent of the school districts in the state and city have to be a DNF. So when Columbus goes up, somebody has to go down. So everybody doesn't start with the same benchmark and everybody, everybody can't be a A in state and city. It's just the way the model is depicted. So that's the element of the model that is an unforced error as it relates to economic development is everybody can't move. And then at the times when a lot of the DNF schools were moved, and I was in a different district at the time, when the DNF schools started to move, they changed the cut score. So after that, the, um, I, I would say the integrity of the system changed. And, um, I look back at the day that Columbus was one of those districts that as they moved, they, they moved the cut score. And so, um, some of the other governments of the current accountability model that keep working at is that we've had this model for nine years and a lot has changed in nine years. And, you know, the importance of, um, is it more important to benchmark students to see how well they're doing at the end of your course? The question you have, or is it more important to see what they do post-graduation or they went to a college career very prepared? And so I really feel like, uh, the education committee is listening. Um, I think it's good for us to wait till next year because I do feel like there are changes that's going to come, uh, about the legislation in January. Positive changes, um, for, um, the state. And so we looked at another community-based model that was good for our region. Uh, I know that, um, Dr. Hassan and other local superintendents are to, um, look at doing this model for next year. But I just want it to be a slow and, um, very detailed process, so we don't want to rush into it. So next year would be a better time because we have a lot to focus on in improving our data and then coming on with our, our own metrics. Like I said, this would be a very, um, stakeholder meeting, you know, what do we value? Um, you know, yesterday we talked to the ministry, uh, director for, you know, they really focus on social emotional learning. They focus on things that are very different, high performing jurisdiction than we do. And so I think the discussion is happening, it's at a prime time. And so I, I expect there to be changes with the accountability model as relates to the, um, state model. But I think the community model is always positive for a district. And, um, there are several examples throughout the state, Hattiesburg, Gulfport, that, um, that continuously put out a community model, things that they measure, that's not measured on a accountability model. And Dr. Schumay, did you have anything else to add?
And then COVID struck.
Right. Thank you very much for sharing that. Uh, boards, are there any questions about, uh, information? All right, uh, next we go to our item for student transfers. They have motioned to approve the report. Some has been motioned by Ms. Young, seconded by Dr. Schumay. Any discussion? Here, no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. Uh, now we have consideration discussion to approve, uh, agreement between CMSD and a labor and family clinic. Uh, just a couple of details, uh, from the original proposal I asked Mr. Dunn about, he made some adjustments to it. Uh, one is that it initially did not have a end date on it and because we're capped for four years, um, I just, you know, had to ask him to put it there June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Obviously, it has language that can continue to renew, but if y'all wanna make it a longer period of time, we can do that. Secondly, uh, with respect to, um, the mileage rate, it had initially in there fifty-seven point five cents, which is the current rate. And obviously, we know that the IRS publishes and revises it as things up and down. So he clarified that language a little bit further so that if it went down and it was a couple of years ago, well then certainly we wouldn't be paying a higher rate, especially Mr. Dunn emphasized, can't pay a higher rate than what's published by the IRS. So just a couple of technical details that was, was ironed out, those are the two changes. Uh, does anyone else have any questions or concern on it?
This will be a show of COVID-icing creation. I just started to hear all the nurses and we would do that.
And I think the only other thing is, is we had talked about, uh, and I asked Mr. Dunn and I about this is just, I know that it would be Dr. Biden and Ms. Rogers in the business office before anything is, you know, brought to the board to be put on the documents that is verified with respect to the mileage rate. I don't know what they're gonna report on the, on the actual bill they send or invoice, but that those, I've noticed numbers are checked so that, you know, there's not some misunderstanding about what rate is being, you know, used. So, um, so, um, any other comments or questions? All right, um, so I'll have to motion a second. Not yet. Okay, I didn't think so. All right, so I have a motion. Someone has been motioned by Dr. Schumay. I'll make the second. Any discussion? Here, no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. Now we go to the discussion to approve the MOA between CMSD and Department of Defense, uh, Defense Logistics Agency. Um, and of course, pending contract to meet state law and board term of approval. So Mr. Dunn, can we take this up at this time or?
I'm very proud of Chris.
You verify.
Yeah, there's just something that he made a review. We have a couple contracts that are like that. We just believe that we have to fix like two.
So, so it's being conditional approval based upon those being written?
Right, upon the board, somebody who.
Right.
That we will not be to execute on.
Okay, all right, uh, so would you like to share with us the recording this time?
Yes.
And use the microphone.
Leslie's big plan is, um, our, apparently is on, um, Air Force Base. Um, over the time, um, that I've been here, we've built a strong relationship with the Air Force Base. And they have a computer program in which, um, the Department of Defense will give us their computers and, among them, including, um, Mr. Lawd, to look at what computers we request. So we're working on paperwork right now at school. So what we wanted to do with these computers that are given to us from the Department of Defense is, uh, look at, you know, fixed assets and see if we can put some computer labs in, in communities even though they're being on our, our inventory and try to really get some computers out into the community as much as possible. So we have files of all purchasing and procurement, fixed asset and home rules. But we'll have to get those extra devices. If they're good and improved by DC, well then, um, improve our, our student's having more, um, capacity to have labs in the community.
All right, so boards, you have any questions on the side? All right, so I need a motion to conditionally approve pending the information contract standard being completed under our motion.
So.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks. I'll make the second. Any discussion? Here, no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. Now we go to consideration discussion to approve twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one supplements for additional duties. Uh, what I need a motion to approve?
So.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumay. Any discussion? Okay, here, no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Four.
It is unanimous. Now, item five, consideration discussion to approve staff personnel items. Board, any motion to approve?
Someone.
Has been motioned by Dr. Schumay. Do I have a second? I'll make the second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, here, no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. And board, if we could, we'll take item six, seven, and eight together as one motion. They're very similar. Um, so I need a motion to approve.
So.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks, seconded by Ms. Young. Any discussion? Okay, here, no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. Now we go to our goals update, student attendance report. Boards, are there any questions about the student attendance report?
Well, we'll start there.
All right, um.
I don't like seeing that much more yet, but I know, I know we're working on it.
That's right. Um, now we have our student discipline reports, uh, for the district in each location. Boards, are there any questions on those, uh, discipline reports?
Listen to it.
Uh, dropout report, any questions on the dropout report? Uh, safety, uh, report, any question? COVID nineteen update, any question?
My apologies for the COVID nineteen report not being, um, reported last week. We did report, um, I was still, uh, measuring the report on a district level because we had the Ebola, uh, situation first week. So, um, I was told by Mississippi Department of Health that we should start doing it by school. So I delegated responsibilities, they all put the data in, just for me to look at the report this week, not being a C-CMSD on the report. So I contacted Mississippi Department of Health to ask why, you know, after we put this information in, did it not show up? Now, I wanna knock on wood, last week we didn't have any cases, so it may have been because we had all zeros and I don't think we had any quarantine teams last week. But if you steal the data, it should not have showed up. I didn't, our district wasn't even on there, like, even our previous cases weren't on there. So, um, Dr. Schumay, that makes, I should have questions on, oh, some schools are on there some weeks and why they're not? Because I got sure you and all our principals and services submitted the data by school. And I think that the report to send, to put in the file to, um, here to the board.
They have, they have no problem if you need to go back and work it, because that's very, um. I looked today and see if they had the report for stuff that would, they usually come out on Wednesday, but as of this morning, uh, last report that was up there was October second.
Well.
But I mean, we're there.
Yeah, we're there, okay, well, I need to check in. So when I checked, it wasn't there, so maybe that's the problem. I looked at the wrong time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that, that clarification.
Okay, uh, so that brings us to closed termination for executive session. I have motion for closed termination.
So.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Okay, here, no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yeah.
We are going into, uh, closed termination. I'll be out shortly, make it now.
That's right. Alright, so that brings us back to, we're back to regular session. When we closed termination, Mr. Sparks made the motion, it was a five oh vote, to take up the items that were announced. Mr. Sparks made the motion, Ms. Young made the second. It was a five oh vote for the executive session minutes to be approved. Dr. Schumay made the motion, Ms. Young made the second. It was a five oh vote regarding the potential litigation for the Franklin route and the potential litigation for the Verde route. There was no action taken on either item to go into regular, or return to regular session. Mr. Sparks made the motion, I made the second. It was a five oh vote, and that brings us back to our agenda. We do not have to amend the agenda if we could, and that is to add the... Would it need to be two separate items, Mr. Dunn, one to rescind and one to consider?
I think we can take it up under, what, what item was it, or some page four? Which one of those items did we, did you all approve?
It's the combined and combining, it's up toward the top of the...
What number?
Let me go... Um, let's see here. Um, four B eight. Four B eight.
Okay, so four B.
And it's the FY twenty amended...
Roman numeral four?
Yes.
Roman numeral four.
Yeah, first page, under board travel and discussion.
Okay, so someone needs to make a motion to amend the agenda to take up again consideration approved, uh, to, to rescind previous action and approve the CMSD combined and combining FY twenty amended budget.
Okay, so do I have a motion to do what Mr. Dunn is instructing me to do? Alright, so the motion by Ms. Young, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
It is unanimous.
Okay, now we need a motion to rescind the action previously taken to approve the CMSD combined and combining FY twenty amended budget.
Okay, so that's... No, this is just, no, no, we just, we amended the budget to allow us to take this up. I mean, not the budget, but the agenda.
Yeah, okay, good.
That's what that motion's for. This vote is the actual item that we added to, so it's to rescind the fourth, the past action to, that we approved it, and to approve...
Well, let's just do one...
Okay, so this will be to rescind the action taken earlier regarding the CMSD combined and combining FY twenty amended budget. So do I have a motion?
So...
The motion by Mr. Sparks, I'll make the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote? It is unanimous. Now we need consideration to approve the CMSD combined and combining FY twenty amended budget, the amended, amended budget.
Subject to approval by...
The state.
The state.
Subject to approval by the state. Has been motion by Ms. Young, I'll make the second. Alright, any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Okay, for the sake of the secretary and her minions, me and Miss Wood, um, you, when you amended the agenda, you basically renumbered and those two numbers that we just covered, those two items, were automatically, I mean, the board intended for them to be twelve and thirteen, making fourteen consideration on the discussion to approve the Franklin architect, and making fifteen...
No, no, that's already down the list. Signify the architect, the AIA is the next item up.
I know, but it's gonna be renumbered.
But it's already on...
It's got, that, Roman numeral twelve is no longer valid because we...
Wait, no, 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 alright, so hold on one second, because we got two separate issues. Number one is the, the amending of the, the amending of the agenda, and then the second thing is...
Roman numeral twelve, I became Roman numeral twelve.
Okay.
That, if, if we amended the agenda, everything's gonna shut down.
Okay, alright. So, Roman numeral twelve, and then that's to rescind.
Yep.
And then the action that was taken...
Thirteen.
Was thirteen, and now number fourteen is the consideration and discussion to approve contractual services by illegal party.
And then the most important is fifteen to the ground.
Right. Right, well, and I mean, but, but the, to the amend the agen, but to amend the agenda would require Roman numeral, it would just, in the minutes reflect the action that was...
I, I was saying that it can be, you amended the agenda, and the fact you're being Roman numeral twelve.
Okay, so when we amend the agenda, we don't need a wrong and separate Roman numeral. We just need, we amend the agenda, and now what we added to is twelve thirteen.
It's okay, as long as the secretary votes what is going on.
Twelve will be to rescind, motion thirteen.
Perfect. Perfect.
Alright. Well, it's been a long... Alright, so, alright, so, so now we go to item, uh, the next item, which is consideration under discussion to approve contractual services by illegal party for the repair of the Franklin Academy group. And so, I know that the supplemental information we added, and when I pulled it up, it was looking at, it's not there. Okay, so... The, um, 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 and I say can't approve, you can't see it.
Is it, so, I'm supposed to have to put it back in FTX and take it out? I can put it back very quickly if you like. I didn't have a hard copy here, though?
You got a hard copy.
I didn't have a hard copy.
You have a hard copy, and I guess...
You all saw it before, so...
Yeah. You know, we... Alright, so, alright, alright, so, the AIA, and I guess the biggest thing is the individuals who are roof repairs at Franklin Academy. We heard all of this will be paid for by the insurance company. Um, looks like that they're... Trying to find here, their responsibilities are outlined with respect to this particular project. They have their scope of services. Kind of fun, there's a lot of what shows here. They'll handle bidding of the particular roofing project, split designs, um... I don't know, now I seen that they will provide basic services, system facility surveys, building information model management. I guess the list of other services, I was trying to find some things where they said that that's what the... That we should have set, we being owner should establish a budget for the project, um, possible work, uh, owners, other calls, regional contingency calls, um... Which has to be paid by the insurance company, and... Compensation, architects fee for basic services shall be six percent of the construction cost. And compensation for supplemental and additional services of the architect consultant, which not included in section eleven point two or three, shall be an amount invoiced to the architect, uh, plus five percent. So, and then of course, we'd be responsible for transportation, reimbursement, over, you know, all the other parts that go along with the agreement. So, anyone have any questions about it, or feel through it? Okay, alright, so I just need a motion to approve the AIA, and I would assume that would also be approving the, uh, going forward with bid and everything goes on with getting a roof repaired.
So, ahead and go ahead, Mr. Dunn.
Well, right, I get that, but we're just giving a go-ahead to start that process, if not factual, somebody jump up there and start pulling off sheeting. Okay, alright, alright, so, alright, so, do I have a motion?
So...
Has been motion by Mr. Sparks, do I have a second? Second by Dr. Schumay, any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Now we go to, uh, the last item on today's agenda, which is to go into overtime. I need a motion to approve. Has been motion by Mr. Sparks, do I have a second? Uh, Ms. Cox, a second there. Uh, any discussion? Just reminding twenty first, wear comfortable shoes, comfortable clothes, it will be inside outside, it won't be crawling on roofs. So, alright, uh, any, if there's no discussion, none, all in favor, please signify with your right hand. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?